Rick, good morning.
One?
Okay, it's 9:00 AM. All right, good morning. It is 9:00 AM. Welcome to this September 6, 2023, meeting of the Trinity County Board of Supervisors. If you will stand, Supervisor Carpenter Harris will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Begin this morning with a proclamation, Behavioral Health Services, item 1.1. Adopt a proclamation which recognizes the month of September as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Did you want to say a few words before I read the proclamation?
I could say it after.
Okay, I'll read it first. A proclamation of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity recognizing the month of September 2023 as Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month. The week of September 10 through 16, 2023, is National Suicide Prevention Week. A time in which individuals, organizations, and communities around the country join their voices to amplify the message that suicide can be prevented. And whereas it is recognized that people of all ages benefit from common tenants of wellness such as access to effective health and behavioral health care, social support, and a sense of meaning and purpose. And whereas attitudes and perceptions about aging, behavioral health challenges, and suicide have a significant impact on individual wellness and the willingness to reach out for support and services that can alleviate distress. And whereas cultivating and maintaining wellness is a lifelong pursuit. And individuals of all ages can benefit from integrating wellness into their daily routine to prevent or reduce the severity of a broad range of health and behavioral health problems. And whereas knowing the signs of suicide, finding the words to talk with someone that may be thinking of suicide, and reaching out to local resources are steps everyone can take to care for themselves and others. And whereas, all Californians are urged to play a role in suicide prevention and promote mental health and wellness as we strive towards zero suicides. And whereas, September 10 through 16 is recognized across the United States as Suicide Prevention Week, providing the opportunity to educate and engage everyone in our community to find their role in suicide prevention. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity do hereby proclaim the month of September 2023 as Suicide Prevention Month. Be it further proclaimed by all members of the Trinity County Board of Supervisors on this sixth day of September 2023, that the week of September 10 through 16, 2023, be declared Suicide Prevention Week, and that the day of September 10 be declared World Suicide Prevention Day, duly passed and adopted the sixth day of September 2023 by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity. Could I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Oh, second.
Motion by Supervisor Lootweiler, second by Supervisor Goken.
Supervisor Goken.
Aye.
Supervisor Lootweiler.
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier.
Aye.
Chairman Cox.
Aye.
Jeff.
Hi, I'm Jeff Kiss. I'm from Trinity County Behavioral Health. I'm the Mental Health Services Act Coordinator for Trinity County. I prepared a little presentation for Suicide Prevention Month. It's kind of what we're doing in Trinity County and some statistics on what's happening in the country, the state, and our county. So in California in 2020, this would be during the pandemic, there was 4,123 deaths from suicide. In 2021, 4,104 deaths seemed to be a little bit of a drop during the pandemic. The highest increase has been in the Latino population. That was from 2010 to 2019, a 35.6% increase. African-American population was a 31.1% increase through the years of 2020, 2020 and 2021. It's shown a slight decrease in the numbers showing that perhaps the state efforts that are being made for suicide prevention are actually having some good. LGBTQ youth are more likely to engage in suicide behavior than other youth. Suicide is the third leading cause of death in youth ages 15 through 24. That's approximately 8.7 kids per 100,000 above population. Nationwide, 2021 was 48,183 suicides. 2022, 49,449 deaths from suicide, and the CDC reports that that's an all-time high. Trinity County Suicide Death as of July 23, 2023, we have 3.8 per 10,000. That's four times higher than the California average, which is one per 10,000. So we have a problem in Trinity County with suicide. And so we need to step up our efforts, and that's what we're doing. In the past, we've, we've set up a table and hoped that the people would come to us so that we could talk to them. Well, we're changing the table. Instead, we're beating feet and going everywhere and going and go talk to everyone. Go to the businesses, go to the schools, go talk to the people instead of waiting for them to come to us. Adults and other adults who seem to be most at risk, those are the highest numbers of suicides. TCBH has been doing outreach in the previous months before September by handing out pamphlets and locally made keychains promoting the new 988 crisis line number and the National Suicide Prevention Hotline. The new 988 number is a number where you can call and get a mental health professional. I called it, and it's true. Just they guarantee you that you don't get put on hold, and that was true, too. Trinity County has purchased and set up a new crisis fan, and it's been used in outreach in the community already for crisis and to strengthen community awareness of our availability to help and serve. We were present at the county pride picnic to support our community and meet the growing need for suicide prevention. TCBH has planned outreach in the, in the county for the month of September by visiting schools, businesses, and talking with people in our communities throughout the county. We have posters for suicide prevention. We are posting and handing out with TCBH business cards. This particular poster right here is what I'm hanging up everywhere is giving to businesses as our card attached to it, so they know who to call in the county for help. The aim is to promote awareness of knowing the signs of suicide. This right here, we made this ourselves, too. It tells you what all the signs of suicide are inside of it, handing these out everywhere as well, along with some other smaller cards that also shown, we got some pins that have a scroll. Opens up the scroll and you can read the scroll right off the pin, and it shows you the signs of suicide. And one of the big things about, you know, knowing the signs is then out knowing what to say. You know, you gotta, you gotta be ready to start the conversation with the person and then tell them about the resources working. You go for help. So finding the words, you know, finding the words to talk to people, that's the hard part, right? And then starting the conversation with and reach out to resources for prevention and help. TCBH is making an effort in reaching out to the older adult population this month by having presentations on suicide prevention at the Roderick Senior Center in Hayfork on September 21. I will be doing the presentation. And Golden Age Center in Weaverville on 26, I'll be doing that presentation also. This is a kind of a new development with the Roderick Senior Center, the director there. And I are going to try and partner to help folks out in Hayfork more and also getting, trying to get out to the outer reaches of our county, you know, and reach the people that seem to get missed way out there. More activities and outreaches will be planned throughout the year after September to support the communities of Trinity County. Any questions?
I, I.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead, Rick.
The pliers and such that you've pulled together, which I think are wonderful. Do you have those available digitally so they can be shared online?
We could have them available digitally so they could be shared online. This one here comes off of a statewide website.
Okay.
And these are just our business cards. This here, I copied off the internet. This is Suicide in Older Adults, What You Should Know. This is the presentation that I'll be giving at the seniors' centers this month. And this is just information from all this stuff that I've made myself to get everything together instead of having 10 different pages, you know, we got one. And people can get all the information they need. I've got this in my computer, but I could, I could put it, make it available.
Sure, thank you. I'll follow up here. So I really appreciate what you're doing. I've lost good friends, grandmother, fellow veterans to suicide. And the efforts that you're making are, can be huge. So thank you.
That's another place we're beginning to develop a relationship with, too, is with the Veterans Service Officer. I'm a veteran myself as well and just joined the VFW. So, yeah, we're all, we're, we're working that out.
Thank you.
What, what do you think the causes for us being four times higher than the norm?
Well, we have the highest rate of poverty in Trinity County, for one. And there's a lot of drug addiction, a lot of drug abuse, those kind of problems. And I think the problem, too, is that we're so spread out. And a lot of people don't really know how to access resources, you know? We need to get the word out there so that people know where they can go for help. And I think a lot of people are also perhaps in the outer areas of Trinity County, and even in Weaverville and the bigger areas, you know, they don't want to deal with the government. You know, they think the government's gonna do wrong by them. Instead of reaching out for the help, they keep it to themselves or unfortunately, you know, I've lost a lot of friends that way, too.
Is, is there still the 15-minute golden kind of window there where you can pop somebody off the ledge in a way? I always heard that was kind of a, a thing.
Well, I've, I've never heard that, but I think, yeah, the sooner you get to and help them, the better, you know? Generally, the people that reach out want help, you know? If you got the person on the ledge, then it's, there's still time. But most of the time when people don't want help, you just, you hear about it later, you know, what happened.
Thank you very much.
I just want to say thank you for your efforts. It just breaks my heart that we live in such a beautiful place, yet people find themselves so desperate that their only choice, they believe in their mind, is to end their life. Each one of us was created with a destiny and a purpose. And it's just sad to see that so many folks eclipse that. And it's, I think, a testimony to the failures of our society in some ways that we have people who feel that desperation is a better route than to ask for help from a government or community entities that may be able to help them. I think it's, it's on us to open our hearts more and to be less judgmental and to speak to the soul and help them to find their way. My biggest heart goes out, as you mentioned, to the seniors who feel like they've lived a full life, and there's no better way to end it than by their own hand. Speaks to the desperation of the elders in our communities. Our nation suffers from not recognizing sage wisdom and displaces our elders to a place of loneliness and often not a lot of communication. I would ask everyone in your community to go visit the senior that lives next to you to stop by to bring them cookies or to just take 15 minutes of your time to ask them something that they know. And then also for our young people who are so poisoned in their minds that they feel like their only way out is through death. That is a desperate place that we are in in our country when people think that that is their only hope. I would pray that hope would come before that. And if there's anything I can ever do to support you in my district, please just let me know. I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Jeff, thank you for your efforts, for those in your department that collaborate with you, Director Assesman Smith. Thank you for your service to our country and for this effort at this time.
You're welcome. Thank you.
One, two.
Right, Clerk of the Board, item 1.2, adopt a proclamation which recognizes the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. From Human Resource Network. We have Director Sheri White with us, and also you'll have to introduce yourself. I apologize, I've not met you.
My name is Jolene Jones. I'm the Program Director for Empowerment Services.
Jolene, nice to have you with us.
Thank you.
For being here and for your efforts in this, in this area.
All right. Good morning, Board Members and Chair Supervisor. I already introduced myself, but again, I'm Jolene Jones, Program Director of Empowerment Services with the Human Response Network. My program offers emergency and supportive services to victims and survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault. We have been serving survivors for 43 years in Trinity County. I'm here today to discuss an event that we would like to hold in our community for Domestic Violence Awareness Month in October. During the grant year of 2022 and 2023, we have served 201 survivors to date. Historically, we have held a candle walk in honor of survivors, and we would like to bring this event back to Trinity County. In honor of all victims and survivors of domestic violence abuse, we are holding a candle walk, Brave to Walk Away. On October 19, 2023, at 6:00 PM, we will, we'll invite the community to meet in the parking lot of HRN, where we will walk, we'll start the walk and walk west on 299, and then the walk at the bandstand. And I would like to cordially invite all of the board members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A proclamation of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity, authorizing Human Response Network's Domestic Violence Candlelight Walk. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, genders, and income levels. Whereas only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this heinous crime. And whereas October is designated Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And whereas Human Response Network has supported domestic violence survivors of Trinity County since 1980. And whereas Human Response Network will be holding a candlelight walk in honor of survivors of domestic violence and to raise awareness in our community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity acknowledges and supports Human Response Network's Candlelight Walk to be held October 19, 2023, duly passed and adopted the sixth day of September 2023 by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity. Thank you. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to support the, the candle walk and the domestic violence.
Proclamation.
And adopt the proclamation.
Thank you.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Carpenter Harris, second by Supervisor Goken.
Supervisor Goken.
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Aye.
Supervisor Lootweiler.
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier.
Aye.
Chairman Cox.
Aye.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of board members?
I just would like to say something. Thank you for doing this. Our homes are supposed to be the most, our little sacred spaces on this earth. And there is And there is nothing more unnerving than being hunted in your own home. And so I just feel with a desperate heart for anybody who goes to sleep at night afraid or who wakes up afraid or who has to know that they're not safe in their own home. So thank you for helping the folks who are struggling with that.
Thank you for your support. And thank you for your efforts to continue to put this walk on annually. I think it does an incredible job of not only raising awareness, but kind of joining our hearts in a very focused, united cause for a very specific time. So thank you to Director White and to Jolene and all of your cohorts that work with you on this. So we look forward to that date and what that will bring.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Clerk of the Board, item 1.3, Receive an Update from the U.S. Forest Service Representatives Regarding Matters of Interest in Trinity County. This morning, we have with us our Shasta Trinity National Forest Supervisor Rachel Burkey, our Weaverville District Ranger Tara Jones. So ladies, thank you for being here. The floor is yours.
Good morning, Chairperson Cox and members of the board. Thank you for giving us this time. We thought it might be timely to come and give you some quick updates about what we've been up to on your national forests. And I will start out by talking a little bit about the fires that are happening on our footprint right now and giving you some quick updates there before we roll into other forest business that we've been conducting. So in just the month of August, on the west side of the Shasta Trinity here in Trinity County, we have initial attacked over 18 different fire starts on our national forest system lands. The, the two that got away, South Fork Complex and the Deep Fire, both continue, but are, are actually in pretty good, good status right now. The South Fork Complex consists of four different fires, the Pelotro, the Sulphur, the Pilot, and the 3-9 Fire. And overall, that fire is, that complex of fires is 70% contained. And all the fires other than the 3-9 Fire are 100% contained. So we continue to work a bit on that 3-9 Fire. And the containment continues to increase. We are finding opportunities to construct fire line right along that fire's edge, particularly on, on the southern side of the 3-9 Fire. And that, that fire has been particularly challenging because of the presence of lots and lots and lots of dead standing trees from, from fires of, of, you know, many, many years ago that pose a serious hazard to our firefighters. So it limits when we have those kinds of snags on the, on the landscape. It limits the kind of firefighting that we can engage in there. We ensure that our firefighters are either in bulldozers or other contained apparatus instead of out there by themselves kind of cutting fire line. So it makes the going a little bit slower, but we're still at 70% and in increasing. We've got about 740 folks assigned to that fire at this point. And we share that fire with our sibling national forest, the Six Rivers. Great partnership also with the Humboldt Del Norte Unit of CAL FIRE and the Trinity and Humboldt Sheriff's Departments have been invaluable in their support with that firefight down in the South Fork Complex. The Deep Fire is 60% contained at this point, and we are making great progress there as well, getting some direct line in around the areas of the fire where we can actually approach it. There are chunks of that fire that are burning up into some rocky areas and they're, it's kind of holding there. So it is neither effective nor necessary to construct fire line around the rocky area. It will check there until it goes out. And we're going to continue to staff that fire until it goes out. It's looking good, pretty, it's actually looking very good now with very little heat left into it. The, the unique thing about our deep fire you guys may have seen is the, the use of our pack string of mules on that fire because it was in the wilderness. A unique aspect of firefighting in the wilderness is we are limited in, in the kinds of equipment we can use in that footprint. So having our local mules available to us and trudging in to kind of restock our firefighters has been critical in our ability to kind of contain that fire effectively. So 60% contained, a little less than 300 people are committed to that fire at this point. And we've had wonderful partnerships with CAL FIRE's Shasta Trinity Unit as well as the volunteer fire departments that have popped out and helped us with that fire. The sheriff as well has been a key player for us and Sierra Pacific Industries and the CHP. So also wanted to give you a very special thank you for letting us use your library for our cooperators meetings there. So it was an absolute team effort and we certainly couldn't have done this alone. We do have some forest closures still in place with the fire on the ground. It's important to us that we make sure that people stay safe and know where it's safe to go on our national forests. But we are at this point looking at shrinking that footprint down. And we're going to be doing that as soon as we determine that it is safe to do so. So that conversation with my staff has been ongoing. Quick hiring update for you. The West Side has now hired 23 new positions. And just to give you some perspective on that, this is more, these are more positions than we have hired for this side of the forest than the previous five years combined. So success there on our hiring efforts and the hiring efforts do still continue. As, as you all have heard from me before, and I know have lived yourselves, it's tricky with the, the actual shortage of folks that are interested in the positions as opposed to a shortage of positions that we are flying. So a little bit of a, of a different angle of, of challenge there than we've had in the past. But in this moment, we've been really successful at getting people on board and starting to get them trained up. Quick update on our National Recreation Area Management Unit. This is the management unit that is led by Sarah Acreage. As you may know, Sarah is off on a detail as forest supervisor, acting forest supervisor in New Mexico on the Sebala National Forest out in Albuquerque. So she's trying her hand at the next level up. We're super happy for her there. We will have a detailer in behind Sarah, starting at the end of the month. His name is Mark Goschorn, and he's coming to us from Arizona, from the Copanino National Forest, has a deep background in recreation. In fact, he is their district recreation staff officer there. So we're excited to have Mark coming on in behind Sarah and we expect that, that Sarah will be back by the end of the year, beginning of next. Ben Gray, who has been her acting deputy district ranger for the moment, is going to be ending his detail and leaving at the end of September. So little bit of shifting and moving in the, in the staffing front, but otherwise we're all, we're all pretty stable at the, at the forest leadership level. Quick landscape update for you. This has been on all of our minds. So we have achieved 162% of our target for this year's acreage treated. That's 11,164 acres and counting. I think by the end of the fiscal year, we'll be at 11,900. We'll be at 174% of our target. This was a target that we had represented to the Washington office that we could accomplish, should they provide us the funds that we asked for. And as, as you may recall, they provided us about $16 million. And, and we were able to put that to great use this year and will continue to put that to great use in coming years. We have now selected a permanent landscape program manager. Her name is Bobby Miller. She should be on board with us at the beginning of next month. She is a fish biologist by trade. She comes to us from the regional office. She's in their ecosystem planning staff. And we were able to grab her as our kind of leader for that landscape effort. So that'll be nice. We've had a couple fantastic folks doing details in, in, in a little bit of a revolving position there. So it will be nice to have some permanent dedicated eyes on this and all of our efforts that are underway for the landscape. The fuels work that we have under contract in the coming kind of immediate future is our Trinity Integrated Resource Service Contract, which is going to allow us to treat another over 4,600 acres and remove over 70,000 more tons of hazardous fuels on the landscape. We expect to be able to turn some work or turn to some work on our Petty John project, which has been a long time in the coming. And then also our Kellogg Fuel Break Contract has been awarded and we expect that work to be starting there in the next couple of weeks. That's a fuel break around our Hayfork area. So those are some of the, the planned, the works, the plans for work moving forward. But in terms of planning, and that includes some of our environmental analysis and some of the other things we have to do before we can actually break ground on some of our projects. Our High and Palm Community Risk Reduction Project is currently being scoped. So we are having conversations with the public to chat with them about ideas for that one. The Bowerman Fuel Break Project is also being developed through a partnership with the Watershed Center and is expected to go out for a bid the first quarter of '24. And then lastly, a project at Junction City is being developed in collaboration with community representatives and the Forest Service and the Watershed Center are working together on that. Under the theme of partnerships, which are so important to us, our, our road damage from some of these winter storms was repaired through our partnership with the Trinity County Resource Conservation District. Looking ahead, we intend to have a robust prescribed fire program coming up this fall. And on the forest, we're planning to burn up to 3,900 acres as conditions allow, fall and spring. This is going to include both pile burning and under burning. This is an extraordinarily effective way to make sure that our wildfires don't get out of control. If we can run fire through it at a date and a time and an intensity of our choosing, we are much more likely to then catch the lightning strike fire that happens in the same spot. In fact, it is, it is the single most effective way to make sure that we keep our fires in check, fighting fire with fire, so to speak. Thrilled to oblige over $1.4 million into our Good Neighbor Authority Agreement with Trinity County. So that, that's another latest update with that, hoping to get some critical work done within the landscape and around our communities in the county. And then lastly, our public and stakeholder engagement, we continue to prioritize that as we work to create and maintain the momentum that we have here on this side of the forest and to ensure that we reduce the risk of wildfire to our communities first and foremost. That is our goal. That is our agency's goal. That is our national office's goal. And that's what we work towards every, with every project that we do. In fact, just today, after we get done chatting, we will be heading out to the field with Sierra Pacific Industries to look at a fuel break across some property ownership. Because this, again, it is a team effort and, and we certainly could not be successful on our own without making sure that we have the partnership, the support, the help from all of the different jurisdictions that we intertwine with, the communities and the organizations that, that, that are kind of part and parcel of what we do every day. So that is a quick overview of the Shasta Trinity's happenings of late. And I would love to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you for
Thank you.
Giving me the time. Thanks.
Questions?
I just want to say thank you so much for the work that, that this forest has been doing. I'm looking forward to the projects that are coming. And I've just been very grateful and impressed with the amount of outreach during the fires to myself for the fires that are, have been in my district, but dealt with or still going on. And I'm super grateful for that. The information has been flowing very readily and I have felt fully informed. So thank you so much for, for advising your staff to do that. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you very much for our fire and keeping us informed. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
And Ben did a great job out there. He really did, did well.
Good. So happy to hear that.
And I just wanted to offer on Tara's behalf, my appreciation specifically for the work that she's been doing, going to some of those briefings that were taking place very early in the morning that I know had to be prepared for earlier in the morning. And then seeing her that night at a community meeting. And the message that was heard from everyone made it very clear that Tara was representing our interests and our expectations. And it was, it was really comforting. So thank you and wanted to make sure you knew.
Thank you.
Good, Frazier?
Good. I guess what I would offer is the, the level of, what's the right word? I'll just engagement, for lack of the one I wish I could find. When I make the smallest inquiry or express the smallest concern to one of your staff members, it is not an hour before somebody's on the phone with me, I have an email, a text, we're looking into this, or here is a, a deeper dive into the information you were asking for or a better understanding. The level of communication that you must have among yourselves is awfully impressive. And, and what that shows is the level of care and concern. And I just want you to know, I notice it and I really appreciate it. So Supervisor Brookie, you weren't with us and neither were you Ranger Jones. Last month, when Ben Sundahl was here to give the update, we really recognized the barbecue that you put on. And it was, it's, I just want to be able to say to both of you, I, it is my perception that it was the brainchild that started with YouTube. And the pulling cooperators together in that way, it was, it was wonderful. It was such a, such an expression of the, the desire of folks who live and work here to work cooperatively together. And now expressed on the ground in fires we wish we'd have had to deal with, and we did. And it has been wonderful to see the cooperators come together and the way that you have embraced that help and allowed it to be a community effort to get the job done. So thank you for that and obviously for this update. Appreciate it. Nice to see you.
Likewise. We appreciate the, the support.
Thank you.
All right, item 1.4, Planning and Zoning. Receive a presentation from Mentor Harnish regarding the General Plan Update and Community Plans Mapping. Okay, introducing, we have Director Presley. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Cox, Supervisors, Interim Deputy Director, Building and Planning at Presley. As you're well aware, the community plan aspect is where we're at right now with the general plan update. And so to give a presentation on the, where we're at with the community plans is Brent and Michael Gibbons from Mentor Harnish.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Supervisors. It's a pleasure to be with you all this evening and provide you, or this morning, provide you all an update on where we are at with the general plan and most importantly, the community plans. So again, my name is Michael Gibbons. I am the Assistant Project Manager for the General Plan Project. Along with me today is Brent Gibbons. He is the overall project manager. And who is not with us is Jim Harnish, who is the principal and owner of Mentor Harnish. And then he's the project director. So what I am hoping to provide you today is an update on where we've been, why we're here, where we are going. And then ultimately solicit feedback from you all this morning on where we're going to go next. And that is really going to be honing in on which communities we will be either grouping into community plans or area plans. So I'll start with how we got here. So at the outset of this project, when we started, there were really three main deliverables that our firm was going to be assisting the county with. The one was going to be, of course, the general plan. It's a series of elements or chapters that address major components of the inner workings of a county. The next was going to be the environmental assessment of that plan, we call it EIR. And then the following was going to be a zoning code update. And that was going to be really the, the teeth of the project. It was really going to implement all these great ideas that we had come up with. Early on into the process of community engagement, it became very aware to us, as do the consultants and then your county staff, that there there needed to be another aspect of this project, and that was community plans. And so, as you remember, you, the board, uh, came back to us, modified our contracts. And that contract amendment was to prepare five additional community plans in addition to the five community plans that already exist in the county. As you're aware, you are a county with no incorporated cities, so all of these communities are unincorporated. They would fall under the jurisdiction of the overall county general plan. Community plans further implement that general plan. They have to be consistent, but they address more unique aspects of communities that the general plan wouldn't necessarily address. So in November of last year, we facilitated a total of ten workshops across the county and reached out to all of the communities that were identified in our existing conditions and trends workbook at the outset of this project. It was a wildly successful engagement event. Uh, we were here for a week, and we published the results of that engagement event on a, in a workshop summary, which is available on the website. In July through August of this year, we conducted a follow-up engagement to the previous engagement last November. And this was a digital component, and this was an online survey in which we asked community members to a series of questions to further hone in on the unique attributes of these communities. And really, the most important step was to define a community boundaries for these communities as there are discrepancies that currently exist in the county documents, um, as to the boundaries of these various communities throughout the county. What we were initially going to do today in this presentation, and if you look at the memo that we had provided, we were going to not only ask you to decide which communities we're going to receive our community plan, we were then also going to ask you to decide the boundaries for the communities. And we felt that that was going to be a lot for one, for one meeting, and that that really should be broken up into, to two meetings. And so we worked with, um, your county staff to break this presentation up into two separate meetings. And so today, what we are hoping to do is to determine which communities are either going to be grouped in community plans or which communities will receive a standalone community plan. And we have provided some metrics for you that I hope to go over. Before we get into that, I want to just map out where we're going next, just so it's kind of a clear understanding of how this information's going to be used. So today, pending the determination of which communities will receive area plans or community plans, we will then come back and prepare, come back and solicit feedback on community boundaries for those plans at a separate meeting. I think we have that scope for early November. Following that, we will then do a, uh, community plan visioning exercise. Uh, that will be a workshop. So we'll go to these communities again, the communities that you select. Um, and we will host a series of workshops, very similar to our November workshop series last year. And we hope to then gain additional uniqueness, hone in on these attributes that the community plans should address. Being that the community plans, um, should address the unique aspects, again, of these communities that the general plan wouldn't necessarily cover. After we come up with vision and some principles and for these plans, then we will come back to you in the spring of twenty-twenty-four with five additional plans, whether that be an area plan or a specific community plan. So, the meat of the discussion today then is really to hone in on which communities we are going to be preparing community plans for. That is a decision that really, um, is going to be left with, with you, the elected officials, um, from the feedback received from your community. We are here to, to, to simply just provide that feedback for you in a way that's palpable. Um, and in a way that hopefully will advise you to make the best decision for your community. So, as some background, the county has five existing community plans, those being Weaverville, Lewiston, Junction City, Hayfork, and Douglas City. The rest of the communities in your county are simply covered by your general plan. So your general plan zoning, uh, your general plan land use designations. Realizing that we had these five additional plans that you were directed for us to prepare, we then had to come up with some sort of metric to compare, to, to, to provide you some sort of recommendation. Um, and there is no hard and fast rule. There's, there's no book that tells us these things, unfortunately, and so we developed a set of criteria. Um, and from that criteria, we then came up with a couple of options. And before I get into the options, I just, I just wanted to state that in, in, in both of these options are really supposed to be a starting point for discussion. Ultimately, you, the board, have the ultimate decision on which options we pick, the methodology that we used, and the various attributes that came to our, really formed our recommendation. In either option, we, we, we are not proposing the dissolving or the modification of any of the existing community plans. So Weaverville will get, will retain its plan. It will just be updated. Same with Douglas City. Those plans will merely be updated to reflect current trends and what the communities want, but we will not be modifying those in any way to group other communities, and they will, those ones will stay. The, so I just want to make that point clear because I don't want there to be any confusion on, on that aspect. So then what were our metrics? In, in the, in the memorandum that we prepared for you, we had two options that we were recommending, and so the metrics that we derived for that was really analyzing assets, land uses, and services that were available in each of your communities. So what we did is we went back to the existing conditions and trends workbook that we had prepared at the outset of this project that was reviewed and adopted by you, um, the Board of Supervisors, and we looked at the information that we had provided in there and conducted an inventory analysis on a variety of metrics, those being schools, post offices, fire stations, community centers, medical services, state and local buildings, commercial land uses, and landmarks are unique identifiers. So what we did is we, we looked at that existing conditions and trends report, we then created a matrix or matrices of a table, and we totaled all of those services. Ideally, what we were looking at is those communities that had the higher number of services, land uses, variety of land uses, would then receive a community plan or an area plan. Which brings us to our options. So, after looking at these totals and really synthesizing this information, um, we have two options that we're hoping to discuss with you, work through. And an option A is, um, what we would consider kind of a catch-all option in which all communities, all unincorporated communities that currently don't have a community plan, those five, would all be grouped in either an area plan or would receive a specific community plan. And the way that we've kind of laid out this option is that, um, High Palm would receive a standalone community plan just due to its geographic location. And that we would then divide the rest of the communities up into four area plans. Those would be broken up by the downriver area or the downriver communities, so they'd be Highway two ninety-nine West to Humboldt County. We would then envision a, potentially a North Lake area plan, so that would be Highway three to the Siskiyou County line, so Highway three north. Then envision maybe a central Trinity area plan, so south, southeast Highway three and up to Hayfork, and then a south county, which is Highway thirty-six corridor, um, and south, um, highway, sorry, and Highway thirty-six. So all communities would be covered. Option B is instead of having all communities covered, it would only be those communities that scored the highest in our matrices, in those, uh, land uses, amenities, and services. And so what option B proposes is that, um, we would retain the five, of course, we would retain the five existing plans, but we would bring in, uh, new community-specific community plans. And those would be for Ruth, Mad River, Trinity Center, High Palm. We then had this concept of being that we, so there's be four additional plans. We still had potentially one plan that the county has scoped for us to prepare. And we looked at preparing an area plan. And we looked at that this area plan as being really a, a downriver area plan, so it would incorporate the communities of Big Bar, Big Flat, Burnt Ranch, Cedar Flat, Delwell, Mahawkins Bar, Solier. And those are all geographically close to each other, the recreation opportunities, at least based on the feedback that we had received from the community doing outreach are relatively the same. The services, they serve much the same area, again, according to the feedback received from our workshops. And really, it's from those options that we are hoping to engage in a discussion with you as to honing in really, uh, on which communities or groups of communities we will be really looking at. Pending the decision today, we will then present, we will, uh, present to you the boundary concepts that your community members came up during the online mapping exercise. We decided that as opposed to presenting you all of these community boundaries, and before deciding which communities you would be selecting for a plan, um, would be kind of backwards. So, um, today we'll be only looking at really just determining which communities you want us to see prepare community plans or area plans for. I think that I open for questions, but I think we'll be doing a formal recommendation after this action.
Indeed, we will. And just so that the public is aware, when we move into county matters, we're going to move this item four point six to the front. So if that is why you're gathered, you won't have to wait through the previous items.
That's going to do it for my presentation.
All right. Thank you. Right. We will move in now to public comment. This item is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this, on this agenda or within the consent calendar. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda. Is there any public comment in the room? Come on forward. Yes.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Si Vang. I'm a retired federal civil servant, uh, working thirty years for the federal government. I retire as a, uh, engineer, fifteen years in the Pentagon. I live in the Post Mountain today. I'm a new, newly-elected, uh, community leader for Trinity Pines Community Association. According to the twenty-twenty census, we have about three thousand people in the Post Mountain area. And I believe that, uh, during the, during the summertime, there are actually more people coming to work in the Post Mountain area. Today, uh, the Post Mountain, uh, area, community, lack almost any public services. As more and more people are building home in the Post Mountain area, today I, I built a little home in Post Mountain and I live there. So more and more people are building home. We do not want to be left out of the community plan for our community.
I would just interrupt you for a moment, Ashley, pause a time if you would, to ask you if your comments are, if you're leading up to the comments to pertain to the community plan topic, I would ask you to come back to the podium and give those comments when we address item four point six. Because it is an agendized item. If you have comments beyond community plant concentration, you're free to continue with those at this time.
Yes, and then, uh, lastly, I, I want to, uh, we do not want to be let out of the community planning. The first and most important thing of my community is electric, electricity services to be included in your community plan for Post Mountain area. And also, uh, providing, uh, snow removing during the winter time, so the community can get in and out from the, uh, Post Mountain area during the winter time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are you seeing no other public comment in the room? I would open it to the Zoom.
I have no raised hands.
Right. With that, we will close public comment. Reports and announcements, item two point one, report from department heads. Are there any department heads in the room wishing to give a report? Seeing none. Are there any on Zoom?
Yes.
All right. Report from our county administrative officer, CIO Ty Hill.
Morning. Thank you, Chair. Uh, so I got a couple items. So first, I'd like to, uh, provide a warm welcome to our new HR Director, Leila Cassis, who is with us today, uh, in the audience. She started on one September, and we welcome her to the team. I would also like to publicly thank Liz Hamilton for all her efforts in the HR arena. She did an outstanding job as, and and has worked some very challenging and time-consuming HR items on behalf of the whole county. Uh, she is following a couple of big projects through to completion and will be helping Leila in the transition. Next topic is the courthouse roof repair. Uh, as you know, the project started about two weeks ago when we received a nice mid-August rainstorm from the remnants of Hurricane Hillary. Uh, it was great for the fires, but not so great when two-thirds of the courthouse roof was torn off. Then last Friday, we got another nice dose of rain, uh, all weekend. A- after that rainstorm, uh, throughout the weekend, General Services and Serve Pro were in the building continuing the cleanup efforts. And in fact, good progress has been made. Uh, yesterday, the roof project started back up in earnest. And assuming weather holds for the next ten days or so, the project will be completed. Uh, and we'll be in a much better position as we come into the winter time. The cleanup efforts within the courthouse, uh, Serve Pro is continuing and is making good progress, given the circumstances, uh, and we should be back to normal operations. You know, with, within a week to ten days. The next topic, so upcoming budget hearings, the proposed budget will be released, uh, this Friday, eight August, uh, and the public will be able to view that. With budget hearing scheduled for twenty-five Sep-, I'm, I'm sorry, I said Friday, eight September, uh, not August, sorry. Uh, Friday, eight September, with budget hearing scheduled for twenty-five September, uh, when, with final budget adoption scheduled for twenty-nine September. Staff has been working hard on the overall county-wide budget challenges, and I'm proud of the work that entire team has accomplished to develop the proposed budget. And I'm sure there will be more discussions on this topic as we progress through the month. And that's all I've got today. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Supervisor Carpenter-Harris. I should have prefaced that to say we're moving into reports from, uh, members of the Board of Supervisors.
I had no, um, out-of-county travel, but I did spend a significant amount of time with a couple of, of folks, just learning more and more about the county's operation. I had a delightful tour of our probation department, which was very informative. I'm grateful for that. I met with, um, several different entities of our partnerships that we have with SPI, SPI, and then also with PUD. And I had a fantastic opportunity to tour the Trinity, um, river headwaters with our local watershed, uh, group and, um, many of the partners engaging in that project on the eleven thousand acres. And, I think. And then, of course, just engaging with the community regarding the wildfires and so forth. So, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Goken.
I have no out-of-county travel.
I have no out-of-county travel. As far as meetings go, I am part of the opioid coalition here in Trinity County to help our opioid problem here. So we're making some good headway there. It's going to be a long way to go, but I'm glad we're getting on it now. As far as the Trinity County water, which I think I can answer now.
Oh, we'll do that when we do that.
That's it, that's it for me then.
All right, thank you, Supervisor Lutwiler.
Okay. Lost a little track of how long it's been since we met last time. So I believe all of this was since our last meeting, out of county travel to Anderson for Economic Development Meeting, ready for, or that was actually for Workforce Development Meeting, ready for Economic Development Meeting and Sacramento last week for CSAC Board Meeting. I'll send out an update later, but the board meeting was interesting because of the departmental updates, if you will, from the CSAC groups. And there are a number of, well, there was a record number of bills presented, and there are a number of them that are looking like they're going to make their way through, several of which CSAC had opposed on our behalf. And there are some concerns about how that will impact us. So I'll share that update in general so that people have the notes through Ashley and then following up with some of our staff whose departments might be most affected by those things. There was a bit of concern about housing, and there was a sort of an awakening that the fires and the fire insurance is part of what's causing more of a problem with housing. And there was some good news by a person on the team who's working closely with a group of folks, the planning or the insurance commission, the governor's office, and several other groups all working together. And they're actually trying to come up with something that will pull back in the insurance organizations who have left. And so that we can reinstate those kinds of services, likely at higher rates than they were, but probably much less than what people are left with with the fair plan. So you'll pay more than you had before probably, but you will, unless you had the fair plan, then you would ideally be able to get off that better coverage, lower rates than that. They're optimistic that something will happen. So I thought that was really good news.
Very good.
I think I reported on this at the last meeting, but the Airport Advisory Committee did meet and we had some good community representation. We still need representatives from several of our districts. We only have two districts represented on the Airport Advisory Committee, but we got feedback from them as well as some members of the public. So I encourage all supervisors to get someone to step up for your areas if you'd like them represented in the decisions. Again, this is a committee that makes recommendations, but they provided some really good, strong input to Director Kocas to determine how to move forward on some issues at our various airports. You may have something to add to that since you were there too and have a history with that. I think that is it for now. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Supervisor Frazier.
I had no out-of-county travel. The only real meeting I had since our last meeting is I did attend the Post Mountain PUD meeting. I think it was maybe actually a special meeting and to discuss some of the stuff that's going on with them. And I will continue to try to stay engaged with Post Mountain. They're making great strides in getting their PUD back up and running after several months without a forum. So they're moving in the right direction fast, so that's a good thing. And I have nothing to report.
Thank you. I also had no out-of-county travel. My meetings were all conducted locally or via Zoom. I met with the new local government and community liaison for the California Public Utilities Commission. Her name is Antoinette Seguenza. She provided a high-level overview of the commission for me, gave her contact information. I asked her to forward any broadband implementation developments, which she did, and I have forwarded those over to CIO Tet Hill. On the first five commissioned, we are looking to fill the executive director vacancy due to the departure of Suzie Cockums. The board is looking into a deeper dive on what our job description, based on that title, really, we want to encompass and an appropriate associated salary. So when those decisions are made, those can then be shared. I met with the NorCal Deputy Regional Director of External Affairs. His name is Marjan Salon. He covers all of the area from the Bay Area to the Oregon border, except for Sacramento and Yolo Counties. He is to be the eyes and ears on the ground for the governor, hearing our concerns and connecting us to folks at the Cal State level that we need to be able to interact with. He says if the governors ever in the region, they will invite the local leaders, but he would help us communicate with Cal HHS and Caltrans. So I've reached out to those department heads to find out, do you have all the contacts that you need? Is this gentleman potentially going to be helpful to you? He does have, I think the most encouraging portion of this is that there are colleagues in his office that speak with RCRC and interact on that level directly. And I think that's going to probably be our most helpful and responsive level of engagement there. And save my economic development comments. So with that, that is the end of my report. Moving in now to reports from the ad hocs, and now we will move to the Trinity County Water. You just have those two meetings, right? And then that?
Yeah, so we have, you want to go ahead? Meeting tonight, actually, we don't, but TRP, Trinity Restoration Programs, putting on a meeting tonight at 6:00 PM, Indian Creek Hotel. They will be talking about the flows coming up, possibly the winter variable flows. And that's going to be an important meeting. So tonight, 6:00 PM, Indian Creek Hotel. And then next week, 13th and 14th, myself and Heidi will be in Wichita for a two-day quarterly TMC meeting. And that should be even more important to Trinity County. So we're on it.
All right, thank you. Cannabis ordinance ad hoc.
Dan?
Do you want to start or you want me to?
I'll let you. I've been absent with my travel for some of it.
Me also.
Okay.
So the main update from our cannabis ordinance ad hoc is that staff has been working and actually sent us a draft, which I've started to look into, of the updated ordinance. We have received some public comment and the special email here lately, but our ad hoc hasn't actually met for a couple of weeks now. We canceled one, so staff would have an opportunity to get a product for us to review. And then last week, Rick and I were both gone. So there hasn't been much movement there. Stuff should be really picking up now. We have the draft ordinance to look through and go over, make changes, and then the community workshops will be coming up soon, so.
So when you say that you're going to look over that and make changes, that's just the ad hoc?
That'll be just the ad hoc, yeah. And it's our internal draft before it goes to the community workshop process, and then we'll move on from there.
We've been discussing a lot of these piece parts during our meetings, and this is the first time that we're seeing everything that's been pulled together. So it's just a chance for us to weigh back in on things that we think, you know, needed to be fine-tuned before they were shared with the public. That timeline is pretty tight, though, as I recall, we're supposed to get that released here soon because the public workshops, two different ones will be taking place this month so that we can get then all the public input in addition to what we have received electronically. Then it'll come back for further work and then finally be presented to, I guess, Planning Commission and Board, which will provide two more opportunities for public input. So there'll be plenty of opportunities, but we're trying to get everything out to the public to comment on before we even start those formal Planning Commission Board meetings and to be able to have a time where we don't necessarily have to limit to three minutes for this and we can have a more interactive discussion, hopefully. So that's coming up soon.
Very good. All right, regarding economic development ad hoc, Rick, did you want to begin?
My economic development stuff has been a little bit on hold with all this other stuff and travel, so nothing, nothing new to report other than what we've done together, and that was more you. So I'll let you take it.
So I was pleased to have the Zoom meeting accomplished with the Deputy Director for Economic Development at RCRC, Bob Burris. And he and CIO Tet Hill and Supervisor Lutwiler and myself met to discuss ways by which RCRC can engage with us and interact for suggestions on how best to move forward. We shared with him the steps we've taken to date, the things that the TCDC has done, the community meetings that we have had, those places where Supervisor Lutwiler and myself have engaged with neighboring counties, predominantly Siskiyou County, and the opportunities that have been exposed to us, some of those come at cost. And so those kind of opportunities then need to be weighed in a balance. And I think that's one of the pieces I really was asking for was, can you help us kind of know, you know, these are areas where with a higher level of experience in trying to move a community forward in this way, where would you recommend that we put our dollars? And, and so out of that, he introduced us to the, or is planning to make the connection with us, the new, she's not new, she'll be new to us, California Association for Local Economic Development. Her name is Gerbaks Sahoda. There are 800 economic development professionals within that collaborative community there that will do training through their academy. Bob himself is on their Public Bonds for Nonprofits Board. Gerbaks has a group of consultants that work for her for free. And Bob has then arranged for us to meet and discuss our situation directly with her in mid to late October, so that date is yet to be set. So I look forward to meeting her and furthering this discussion to see where these folks who really have moved communities forward in marked ways, what they would recommend for us. So that was positive, and I really appreciated that input. Right, that is the end of my report.
Did you want to talk about City Hall or not?
Um, sure. So with the efforts in the, so it's a very publicly driven effort. Public meaning, you know, not government. So it's an interesting dance that we do when it is the public that wants to put forward an upgrade to a building that is owned by the county. And so we are working collaboratively with this effort, and right now we are in the throes of getting ready to submit a grant. The first level of this grant would be for planning dollars, which would give us anywhere from 500,000 to, is it 1 million? 5 million in that arena. So we'll see what, if we get their attention, I believe there are in the range of 87 grants planning to be submitted there. So we'll see how strongly we are looked at. And then moving forward, asking if we were to be selected for that, we would then have opportunity to submit for actual implementation dollars in the 7 to 10 million dollar range. So, you know, associated concerns with that would be who would administrate, who would implement all of that. Those things are being looked at in the administrative office and discussed. And so just know, there are many details going on there. And so we have a collaborative team. We've been meeting weekly for the past month. And I think that the biggest jump-off point will be to find out how closely they look into analyzing us for those planning dollars. So more to come. Right, that is the end of the report. Everyone, okay, or do you need a?
No, I just, I just wanted to make a comment. I know when we were getting the update on the water stuff and the mention of the meeting tonight, I have heard from some of the folks organizing just to make sure that they're clear that this is, this is a presentation of information, it's not a town hall meeting. So we've had a number of town hall meetings regarding this, which is very engaging and people can raise their concerns and have dialogues and get answers, questions. And this is really, hey, here's the people who've been studying the impact of the winter variable flows, and we want to share that information. And they're just two different things, and I just want to set the expectations correctly so that we have as positive events as we can. And I believe, is that still happening at Indian Creek Lodge?
Yeah, 6 o'clock tonight, there will be question and answer period at the end. I think the meeting will go probably till 7:30, quarter to 8:00. So it's going to be pretty limited for the amount of people that are there, the amount of questions that are going to need to be asked. I think strategically, having it 6 o'clock and knowing it starts at 9:00 is probably TRP's a good move by them because I think it could drag on for a while. But there is definitely a question and answer period at the end. And it is 6 o'clock tonight, Indian Creek Hotel, bring your own chair, there's supposed to be, from what I hear, anywhere from 100-plus people there.
And then, did you say there were two upcoming meetings? This is one of two?
The upcoming meeting is next week, and it's a two-day meeting, quarterly meeting for TMC, which will be in.
You'll be attending, but not something.
Which will be in Wichita.
Okay. All right, does anybody need a break before I tackle the consent calendar? We good? All right. All right, so consent calendar, these items include routine, non-controversial matters and will be acted upon by the board by one roll call motion. If a member of the public has any questions or comments on an item on the consent calendar, they may provide them now. A member of the board or staff may request an item be polled and considered separately. Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar? All right, seeing none in the room, is there any on Zoom?
I have no raised hands.
All right, that we will close public comment and bring it back to the board. Board members, are there any items you wish to poll?
I will poll 3.5.
Chairman, I would like to point 3.8.
And 3.8, thank you. I think for the record, a board member has to pull that, so I will do so. All right, excluding items 3.5 and 3.8, could I have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the consent calendar excluding 3.5 and 3.8.
Thank you.
One second.
You have a motion by Supervisor Carpenter Harris, second by Supervisor Frazier.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Lutwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Kogan?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye. Right, item 3.5, appoint Anjanet Taft to the Trinity County Water Works District Number One Board of Directors to serve what I believe should read as the balance of a four-year term, expiring December 31, 2026. Supervisor Kogan.
So on the Trinity County Water Works District One, there was initially one opening on the board there. And now it turns out that there is two openings on the board. It was opened up for applications and we did receive, they did receive five different applications this time around for the Water District Board. So what I would like to do is go over all five applications, look at the recommendation from the Water Works District, and then have the Board of Supervisors make their final decision on who will be the next two people to join the Board of Hayfork Water District.
That suggested process, I do not believe would be fitting for today. The item before us says whether or not we will appoint Anjanet to the position.
Correct. My understanding is you're asking to pull this item and have it heard altogether. So nothing will be decided today. It'll be sent back to the board to make a recommendation, or the district board to make a recommendation of two out of the five that they would like versus just one out of the five.
Okay, I didn't understand your request. All right. Okay. All right, with that, are there any questions of board members?
Yeah, I just have a question. Did, I did see that we have a number of letters of interest, which is great, that there's so much interest. Were all those letters in front of the board when they chose this one that they put ahead of us? And the only difference is that now we have two openings to fill?
I'm not aware of that.
So it's like we have an answer back in the audience, if that's appropriate.
Yes, we can have the district manager speak to the item if you would care to. Yes, we can have the district manager speak to the item if you would care to.
Good morning. Sorry, I'm a little congested. It's been crazy in Hayfork, everybody's sick. So my name's Shane McDonald, I'm the new district manager, I'm actually the operations manager of the Water District in Hayfork. So the, the situation we're having right now is that we're down to a three person board, the, instead of the five. So we still have a quorum, but we lost a board member. We went ahead and at the next board meeting said to advertise for the new one, which is a 15 day advertisement. And then we followed through to another meeting, and then at that meeting, before we got to the point where we could even discuss new members, we lost another member. So that put us down to just having three. So then at the next meeting, we accepted that resignation and started advertising. So the second position is not fully advertised yet, it will be very soon. We have a board meeting coming up on the 19th. So at that meeting, after today's passing of Anjanet would give us four members on the board to discuss and have more votes to be able to appoint another one. In the past, that's how we've always done it, is to have as many board members seated as possible, let's more voices. And typically, there is no other way to get the fifth member if you don't have the four on the board, you gotta have four vote on the fifth one. So I, the reason I, I, well, the reason I came today is because Supervisor Gogan contacted me on Sunday and was expressing his concerns with it, the upcoming appointment of just one, and I explained that we can't appoint two at this time, because we're not clear with that. And then he told me he would rather pull all of them and then have you guys go over and decide who would be the best appointment, which really concerns me. Because in the past, since 1959, for the last 64 years, the local boards have, have been able to make the recommendation to you guys, and you have looked at it, made sure that it made sense, and then consented and, and moved on. And so I just, it concerns me that I don't understand why we're not getting the, the respect and consideration that we've always gotten. I don't feel that the board's done anything wrong. And so I don't know why we're losing the ability to pick our board members, and why we can't appoint one today that has gone through the process completely properly. And she has an impeccable reputation, I think she's going to be a great addition to the board. So that's all I'm asking for, is to have the board continue to have its ability to recommend to you guys the, the best member that the board has chosen. One thing I do want to clarify though, on our minutes, we did have a little bit of a slip up that, and we discussed it in the meeting, but it didn't get recorded the way that we had discussed it. So because we had a 2-1 vote on the recommendation, it wasn't actually a passed motion, because we didn't have a voting quorum. So, but the recommendation is the majority of the board we have. And so I talked to council, and it's fine, because we didn't pass anything that's binding. It's just, it's a recommendation. So we'll go back and clarify that in our minutes, and that way it'll, it'll be clear going forward. And then I think that's most of what I wanted to point out. I just really hope that you guys can appoint Anjanet today, so we can continue on building our board and, and get some business done, and not have to risk somebody being sick and not showing up and then missing a whole meeting because we don't have a quorum. With any questions or comments that I need to?
Board members?
Yeah, so my concern was that, say we do put someone on today, which we won't be, you could come to a 4-2-2 impasse at the next meeting for who may be your fifth board member. I'm trying to kind of stave that off, try to get this done as quick as possible. So I think it'd be the wisest choice to see all five applications, go over them, have our board go over them. So make the best, excuse me, and make the best decision that we can make on who would be the best five members for your board. I know that you've mentioned 60 odd years of what I would consider rubber stamping something. It's not a done deal, maybe it's been done that way in the past, but it's not, you are recommending to us who that you might think would be the best board members, and we will find out through this board who is the best board members. So it is our option to, to look at the applications and make sure that we get it right for Hayfork in my district.
May I speak?
Yes.
Okay. So it will always, and has always been, for people on the board to choose the fifth, because you can't have all five to choose. So it's just, I guess I just don't understand why it's different now to not have, I mean, it's always been that way. I mean, it's just the way the math works, you always have four to pick the fifth. And it has always worked in the past. And again, the recommendations have always been given from our board to you guys, and it's never been balked in, like I said, 64 years. I don't understand what my board's done, excuse me, the Hayfork Board has done wrong, or what in this situation is so abnormal that we can't continue to just appoint them by the recommendation that history has shown for so long. That was, that's my biggest thing, is I just don't know what's different, why we can't continue with the relationship we've had that's worked to this point.
I have, I have a quick question. Sure. So if in fact you, we appoint Anjanet Taft to the board, and at your next meeting you reach a 2-2 tie, two members support one person for the board, and two members support the other, another person, what do you do at that point?
If they can't come to a consensus, then I would say, and have the board agree to it, that we can set forth the two best that we put to you, and then you can still pick. And of course, as, as Supervisor Gogan's put out, it is your guys' final decision. But I mean, it does lie with us to be able to talk to them, and we know them, and we're personally involved with them. And they do come to meetings and actually get to talk to the board and talk to the staff. And so we get to have that personal interaction right there. And so you guys are looking at a piece of paper for people you probably don't know, maybe you do. And so we get to really, you know, be close and talk to them and know them as, as community members. And so I, I think if, if we tied and couldn't come to a consensus on anyone, we could submit the two highest people that came in, you know, two to two. And then you guys could make that final decision, obviously. That would be my ultimate, if we couldn't, couldn't talk our way through it.
Thank you. Easiest is to have five people? Or, or not get into that situation where we, we may have a 2-2 tie?
Well,
And, and just remedy it the way that we're thinking of doing it?
I would prefer not, I would prefer to stick with the way it's been done. And, and it's, I don't, I don't want to set a new precedence for having you guys be stuck with picking everything every time, and in this case, it's always going to be four people picking the fifth. Because as soon as our next member retires, it's going to be the same situation. So.
Thank you. Supervisor Lutwiler?
Counsel, I, I'm not sure if you'll know this or not, I, I've only been to the Lewiston Water Services District meetings, and only a couple of those. Are we talking about the same kind of thing? They're the same kind of organization where they have their own special district boards and, but then they come before us to get final approval, is that?
Correct, so there's two types of special districts, there's dependent and independent. For depending districts, the board has the ultimate say in who gets appointed for the positions if there's a vacancy. So what is happening now is that where they're going through the maniac process, they do the advertisement, they get the applications in, and then the board is making a recommendation to this board about who they'd like to see on their board. So that's the process we're going through right now.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. I'm ready to make a motion?
Yes, well, I think we need to open to public comment.
Oh, okay.
Good catch.
Is there any public comment in the room? Yes.
My name's Dennis Rourke. I'm a member of the Hayfork community, used to be in the Water District. My issue with what we're talking about today is we have numerous people on the list that applied for these two positions that have been bypassed at least four times, they're extremely qualified. And we don't really have any answers as to why they've been bypassed. And so I think the option of the board to look at these applications would be a really good thing, to see what we do have going on in the Hayfork area. I'm going to keep it at that.
Thank you. Seeing no other movement in the room, do we have any raised hands on Zoom?
I have no raised hands.
All right, with that, we will close public comment and bring it back to the board. Supervisor Lutwiler, you had wanted to make a motion?
Yes, at least so we can have our discussion, I'd move to approve as submitted.
One second.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Lutwiler, second by Supervisor Frazier. Is there further discussion? All right, Ashley, would you?
No, yeah, I, I would like to have discussion, sorry.
So Rick's motion was to appoint Anjanet Taft today, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
And I would just say, again, I, my experience on this is limited. I know that when I've attended the Wat, Lewiston District, there was discussion about needing to get some new board members on. And they worked with folks who had raised their hands, and they talked about their qualifications and a good fit for what they needed based on who they saw leaving and so on and so forth. And I can very clearly say that I would not think that this board would be in a better position to know what that board needed than they were. And so that's, that's my inclination. And I, I do appreciate and understand the concern of, well, is there the right transparency, the right decision making, is there something going on that should be addressed and, and therefore discussed? But that's not what's before the board. It's really that the board, as approved and seated, as looked through all of the nominations or submissions, voted two to one, as I recall from the notes, to say this is the person they want, they're now advertising for the fourth, fifth one. I'm sure these same people would be up for consideration again for that, as well as anybody else who submitted, and then there would be another vote by them, and then a vote by us. And it just seems like that's, absent any other specific reason not to, then it seems like that's the process we should follow.
To answer that real quickly, with the other four applications that I got, there may be, in my opinion, for other people that have applied that may be better for this board than Anjanet Taft to complete this board. And I do have the applications, if you would like to see them, I can get into you after the meeting, but I have all the applications for all five people who have applied.
The same ones that are in our board materials? Yeah.
Okay.
There are some very qualified people.
I think from my perspective, it's a matter of process. There was one position open, the advertisement went as it was needs to. The applications were received, there was a recommendation. In the course of that series of events, another position is open. The process is again moving forward for that one. We are at this point of the initial process for board member number four, and I don't see a reason for this board to interrupt the process of that board. Any other discussion?
I have a quick question. Regarding the, the position that Ms. Taft is filling is, was in the statement of the application, did it state that the position would remain open until a suitable person was found? Or how is it written? Meaning that, my question is, is, as you spoke of the process, that this, this person submitted application, application was accepted, the board accepted this request and wants us to now approve it. But I hear Supervisor Gogan's concern that in the secondary round, so I'm just asking, does that position have to be filled right now, or was it left open for a more suited, like if there was a more suitable applicant? Is it a final close or no? I, I'm just curious.
I don't know, we, we can ask, typically they do have a, a date, which it closes by, and that is after that date, whatever applicants are received are considered, but there are no, for that position, correct? Which is why they had to re-advertise for the second position.
Okay, understood, thank you.
They had when they voted to choose the one that's before us right now.
Okay.
So it's not like somebody else, there could be somebody else that comes forward when they advertise the fifth, but they've already looked at all of these and made this recommendation.
Okay, thank you, that's where I was, I was curious. Okay, I understand now, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Supervisor Lutwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
No.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
All right, and our second item that was pulled for a deeper dive, item 3.8, approve the regular meeting minutes of February 7 and 22 of 2023, and the special meeting minutes of February 15, 2023, as submitted by the clerk. I did pull this, but I'll refer to our deputy clerk of the board.
I've been having trouble with the novice people on updating the minutes in the background of the program, and they finally got the September meetings updated from Dan to yourself. So I'll be able to reprint those with your name for the signature.
Okay, perfect, so do we just today then pull this and move it to the next consent calendar?
You can vote on it with that correction.
Okay. Um, I would, I would just ask, I don't know, CO Tet Hill, I, I watch our deputy clerk struggle with Novus, and is there anything that can be done to help her, short of finding a new program?
Yeah, we, we've engaged with Novus lots of times at different levels, it's a fairly widely used program. We'll continue to, to work it, it's not the most friendly program to use, nor is the customer service the best, but it's the platform that we and a number of other counties are using. So we'll continue to work it, but it, it is struggling. It's nothing that our clerk of the board is doing to create these issues.
Indeed, yeah. Thank you for the catch, Ashley. All right, so if we could have a motion,
Public comment.
Update.
You have to open public comment.
Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none in the room?
I have no raised hands.
Thank you, with that we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board.
I'll make a motion to approve as amended.
One second.
Thank you, we have a motion from Supervisor Frazier, a second from Supervisor Lutwiler. Supervisor Lutwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
All right, moving into county matters, these, these items include non-routine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of this board or staff may request that an item be heard out of order. We already have that request, we will be looking into item 4.3 as our first item of business. Is there a reason or a request by anyone to change any other item order?
No.
Before we launch into the business, we need to, sure. All right, we will be hearing item 4.3 first, but we do have a request to take a break, so we'll have a five minute break and return at 10, or excuse me, yeah, 10:42.
Thank you.
4.3, that's the one we're doing. Okay. Somehow I had in my head 4.6. I was like, there is no 4.6.
Let's do 4.6.
Yeah, let's do that one. Because we don't have enough.
Yes, you would. Rightfully so.
That's right.
It is 10:45. We are back in session. We are at county matters. We have moved item 4.3 to the front of the line. Discuss and/or provide direction regarding the selection of specific community plan locations and/or designated area plans within the general plan. Discuss and/or provide direction on selecting the specific general plan, community plan locations, and/or area plan designated areas based upon the general plan presentation. So we will turn this back over to our inter-harnish team and let you pick up the item from there.
Perfect. Good morning. So wanted to just turn back to the presentation that we gave this morning, where the intent of, the intent of this portion of the meeting is to receive board direction on which communities are included in either a standalone community plan or as part of an area plan process. Now, this is critical because the next time that you see us will be October 3. And we're going to take those communities that the board determines today and start to refine and define the boundaries for each of those communities. We'll bring back some conceptual boundaries based off community feedback through the virtual exercise. And at the October 3 meeting, the board will determine the boundaries. That then leads up to the next set of workshops, which are tenderly scheduled for November 6 through November 10. Think of this as a repeat of what was done last November. But what's a little different is the locations of where we'll hold those workshops are based on your determination of which communities get a plan today. So Michael had pointed out through this process, the process that there are two options. And as part of these options, they're based on a series of metrics. These metrics are neutral. They're neutral in the fact that they look at statistical data that usually determines how you compile or evaluate a community plan or an area plan. I'm just going to repeat what those options are for your consideration. Option A, Michael called it a catch-all. Think of it as every community is encompassed within a community plan. Either it's the five existing plans, Hayfork, Douglas City, Junction City, Lewiston, and Weaverville. And then the additional five are formed into one community plan, which is for Heim Palm, and then four area plans. So every community is encompassed within something. No community is left out. That actually mirrors the first round of engagement we did last November. So we looked at, we looked at forming area plans at that point. That was North Lake, Down River, South County, and Central. Option B takes a look at more of the, more of the metrics, the data behind it, and the evaluation that was completed as part of this last round of workshops. So option B retains the five existing, then looks at four additional community-specific, uh, community plans based on the total numbers derived from the matrix table that is part of your agenda today, and then looks at an area plan specifically for Down River communities. Those communities are within close proximity to each other, and they share a lot of the services that usually create what's part of planning terminology, what is a community. So your post office, services, water, other community amenities are pretty much dialed in down the 299 corridor, heading toward Humboldt. So both options that are before you today are up to your discretion, your discussion, your action. I will say that both achieve what the county and the board is looking for. Solidify the existing five and make sure that communities are covered through this process, which was a big portion of our engagement so far. And that's what we heard through all of the process so far, when we started this in late 2020, early 2021. So I will hand this back to the chair to start to facilitate discussion with the board. As mentioned, the names of the area plans, if that's the direction the board decides to go, at your discretion. The communities that fall within those also at your discretion. And I'm here to answer any questions, and so was Michael, if you have any other further input or need additional information about what's been done so far and how we came to this.
Perfect. Thank you. And we do have some questions before you leave. So we'll start with Supervisor Lutwiler.
Okay.
Okay, I think, first of all, just to set a, a good frame of reference for what this really translates into.
Sure.
So we, we've heard a number of times, and you've walked us through this several times, but the, the general plan basically says, absent anything else, this is how zoning works. This is what can be done in parcels and so forth. This is how all aspects of a general plan apply to the whole county, every parcel. The community plan says, within that, here's our little tweak to that. Here, we, we have a different set of expectations and a different vision for our community or our area. And so have details that represent us a little more closely than the general plan does as a whole.
Correct. So the general plan looks at the county as, as a whole. All the communities are unincorporated. There is no incorporated cities within the county. The community plan takes that extra lens and goes down to the community level and starts to look at unique identifiers, unique services that make individual communities necessitate having a separate plan of their own. They will have their own vision as part of this effort. That'll be done through the November workshops. But then again, that vision needs to be consistent with the direction the county's heading. Because they're still under the jurisdiction of the board. So yes, it's, it's, it's a, it's a more defined lens looking at, at a community and what other goals or policies that'll further development there, if that is something that, if that's something that the community strives for, or whether it's conservation, it just depends. And we don't know where those community plans are going to head at this point. They're not yet determined.
And the option A, catch-all, as you, as was described, it sounds like the idea there was, we would like to give as much fine-tuned view to the plans as possible. And to do that, we think these groupings reflect where there could be theoretically some consistency in how their vision and desired outcomes and so forth, or their needs of services and so forth, are different than this area versus just picking X number of communities and, and then leaving the rest. Is that fair? That's kind of what you're after?
Yes.
Okay. And a question came up earlier in the public comment, or not a question, but a, a comment related to, for the Post Mountain area, not wanting, wanting to make sure they didn't kind of get left out. And, and, you know, we need electric services, and we need this, and we need that. Does the, does the general plan, community plan really affect that they, what quality or level of electrical services they have? Or that is just a matter of outside of a, a general plan or community plan? I mean, you have to, you have to provide electrical services within those, but it doesn't enhance the ability or the likelihood of having the services, does it?
No, not necessarily. So within a general plan, you'll typically have an element that's called a public facilities and services element. Anticipate that'll be part of this effort. That element will get into the different utilities and infrastructure and services countywide that will look at water, wastewater, it'll look at electricity and so forth. It'll get into policies that help guide infrastructure or where infrastructure ends up. It'll set programs for the, for the board to determine with other regional collaborators about how infrastructure is laid out. But it's not going to necessarily develop infrastructure at that point. The community plans, think of those as more focused around economic development, recreation, and land use. They're not going to get into the full infrastructure aspect. It's going to rely on the countywide as a whole.
And, and so, based on what you guys have already done, because you've already gathered a lot, a lot of information. Can you give an example of something you might expect to be different between the North Lake area in an area plan and Lewiston?
Well, Lewiston has a whole historic character to it, so there can be policy, goals and policies which align historic designations and preservation. Not that North Lake doesn't have that, but it's more prevalent in Lewiston. The land uses are different, too. The geography is different. So in relation to conservation, open space, forms of recreation, and how all of those are compatible, that would differ from Trinity Center, then it would Solier, then it would Ruth, Weaverville. They're, they're just different areas. The populations within each of these areas have different visions and goals for how development should occur, if any. So the community plan would get down to that level. It could look at different aspects of land use within those communities. Some communities may not have certain services that they'd like to see. So there could be goals and policies which start to look at potential land use designations, potential ways to further economic development in certain areas. Recreation and tourism is huge in the North Lake area. When you're heading up to Trinity Center and Coffee Creek, that plan may have more of an economic tourism bent than other areas.
And, and again, I'm, I'm just asking you because I feel like this is really important, what we're deciding. And I really want to understand what the implications are and therefore what is the best decision. So can you take the same example, say, of Lewiston and North Lake, just because I'm more familiar with them?
Sure.
Of how a recreational aspect or economic development aspect would be different in those two community plans, or area plan and community plan versus the general plan? So I'm trying to understand, what, what would that area or that community get? And how would it translate into something that affects what they can do with their land differently than if we didn't do that?
Look, looking countywide, economic development is multifaceted. I mean, you're going to, you're going to touch on employment, you're going to touch on new industries coming in, retaining industry and so forth, where specific communities might focus on more localized tourism, whether that's tied to federal and state land, whether that's tied to more ecotourism. That's, that, that's kind of where they would start to differ. Because the areas in, in North Lake are different than, than Lewiston in regards to access to recreation lands and who is under the, the guise of, of the jurisdiction of those lands. So that's, that's really where we start to hone specifically in, into that. You can have down in South County, you have Ruth Lake, for example. The recreation around Ruth Lake is different than it is around Trinity Lake. Different issues, different geography, and how those areas want to capitalize on that if they want to, to bring more tourism dollars, and if you're focusing on economic development.
And, and I'm still, I'm still missing that part about, like, we had a place-making action plan done. I think you guys are familiar because we passed along some of the results and so forth. And that was a, what we could be when we grow up.
Correct.
But it doesn't limit or affect what can happen. It just says, here's what we know people would like, and it was different by areas. I'm, I'm still trying to get to, from a general plan layered with a community plan, is there something different that can or cannot be done in a community or area because of this community?
Or a community plan can have specific, specific land use directives that are different from the county, but they still need to be, they still need to be consistent.
Okay, so can you give me one example? You've mentioned like recreation different between Ruth and, and I'm trying to understand an example.
Well, I mean, if, if I give an example of housing, the types of housing can be different based on land use designation, based on community. Weaverville is more of a, I'm going to say suburban-style community, I wouldn't say urban, where some of the smaller communities wouldn't have suburban-style development. You can promote land use designations that focus on more larger lots, rural residential development, and that would differ. So you would have policies which start to build up potentially more housing types, diversity, in more built-out areas than others. That's, that's, that's an example when it comes down to housing.
Okay.
But the place-making project, that's not a standalone, off-on-a-shelf piece. The vision and guiding principles, which we were here, actually, early last month, a lot of the, a lot of the feedback that went into development of those initial vision statement and guiding principles was based off the place-making project as well. Those place-making pieces are going to make their way into the general plan. And the general plan, like the place-making project, is a guidepost. A lot can happen within 20 years. A lot can happen in the next six months. It's just some sort of path that the community can, can get on board with, along with the board supervisors, to reach a common vision, understand that there's flexibility with how that comes out.
And last question for now, I think, I think you said at one of our recent presentations, and I think I saw it in the numbers, Heim Palm, which you called out as a separate community plan, had per capita, if you will, really strong representation compared to many. really strong representation compared to many of the other communities. Is that part of why they, that and the way that they're set aside geographically, is that part of why they were separated out?
Representation is a factor, but it's not the overarching piece. It's, it's, it's important when you, when you get an influx of of community desire to formulate a plan. That was very strong in Heinz Palm. I think one of the biggest things with Heinz Palm is it of the metrics, it included a high total of the metrics that are typically found within a community plan, number one. And number two, geographically isolated, it's separate. So when looking at the map, trying to fold it into an overall area plan was a stretch when you, when you start to, when you start to look at the landscape.
And I think it is important to share for the public that in the board materials, which are accessible to everyone. There are presentation materials which include metrics and so forth. A lot of times we're showing those in the meeting and everybody gets to see what we're talking about. In this case, we're, we're talking about it because we know. But I think it was very helpful to see each of those communities, the metrics of all the different ways that you've just described. So thank you.
And if I may add on something to that real quick. The, the option A is is that catchall, every community is included. Option B does, doesn't, does have a more refined list. But I want to make it clear, it doesn't mean that in option B, if that was determined by the board to move forward with, or a hybrid of it. Doesn't mean that those communities that aren't listed, aren't part of the general plan. They are. They're folded into the overall countywide goals and policies, which those which are, which those communities that are part of a part of a community plan still have to be a part of. So no one is technically left out of the process.
Thank you.
I would like to hone in on one of Supervisor Lou Weller's questions, but I want to do it upside down. And if it's uncomfortable to do it specifically here, if you could do it from the standpoint of another general plan, maybe that you have done for a different area. The question I want to know is, I like to like start at the end and work backward. If we were done and we chose one of these or a hybrid, what might be an example of something that a community would have said, uh, we didn't know. This was now going to be a limiting factor to us. We wish we had spoken to that. We wish we had leaned in more fully and asked for that. What might we be sorry we didn't see?
As a result of a community plan or as a result of a general plan?
As, and as a result of not having a community plan, we didn't realize how badly we wanted that. Because we now have a limiting factor we didn't realize. Or we could have had a more open door had we had this more refined lens into who we are.
I mean, the community plans do get down to a more specific, more specific level. And they do allow a more tailored approach to future decisions made for those areas. It's not, it's, it's, it's always under a county umbrella. But if there are specific issues that are raised that are unique, unique to Hayfork and not unique anywhere else, then the community plan is a great avenue to highlight that and have policies which implement or tackle that issue or that opportunity.
Okay.
But I wouldn't say it's, I wouldn't say it causes inflexibility by any means.
Okay, good to know.
And the, the area plan, I can give you one example of a county not too far from here, that takes an entire area plan approach, that's Lake County. Lake County divides the county into a series, I believe of five area plans. And so all, all communities are encompassed within it. Within each of those area plans, those area plans have a vision, a direction. And within each area plan, there are sections that allow each community to highlight themselves and have their own goals and policies pertaining to that. Another example would be Merced County, that is down in the Sandwalking Valley. Merced County has standalone community plans. Then the smaller unincorporated communities are folded into the overall general plan effort. And each of those community plans dictate land use, dictate additional economic development on top of where the county is looking to head over the next 20 years. And gets into wildlife conservation in regards to the river and drainage system in the valley.
That's really helpful. Thank you. And one thing that you did say was that within, referring to the Lake County and how they proceeded, within their area plans, they had sections that allowed each community to highlight themselves and have their own sets of goals and policies. So almost a, a little mini community plan within the area?
Similar, it's just, it's, but what it's doing is the, the area plan is looking at a more regional approach. So some of the economic development would affect all the communities within that area. So you could have a section on economic development, you could have a section on land use. And that's where the groupings came from. The land use issues in certain parts of the county are similar. And and that's where the, that regional approach comes from, but you'll have to highlight each of the communities that fall within it.
Sure, that makes sense. Um, okay. And then my last question, I guess if anything, I want you to just, you might feel like you're reiterating and that's fine. But for anybody who has pulled this up and is looking at the matrix that you have provided that we are looking at. And Heinz Palm being pulled out as the suggested inclusion of a community plan in option A ranks with a four in the total of amenities, services and land use items identified. But I hear you saying it's because of their more isolated geographic location that that was done so versus Ruth that came in with the five, Mad River and Trinity Center, each with seven. Can you just kind of reiterate why the four was more predominant over the larger numbers?
Well, as, I think we're looking at two different approaches. So the first approach looked at a geographic setting. And that's where, for instance, the South County, the corridor, 36 corridor south, those were all lumped together in into one. And looking geographically, Heinz Palm is separate. It is isolated on its own. So option A is more of the geographic approach. Option B takes a look at the metric approach and removes the geographic basis.
Okay. Thank you. That helps. I was, I was making them one. Thanks.
And 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 again, both options achieve what the board has desired as part of this process and where the county wants to head.
Perfect. Yes. Supervisor Governor Harris.
Is there any negative impacts to the county as a whole? Like, will it cost more if we have like more additional community plans or more area plans? In the process of developing these, is there a greater cost to the county or?
More beyond the, the exist, the existing five and five additional?
Yes.
I mean, it, it, it would. Think of community plans as many general plans in a sense. So it's, it's more engagement within each of those communities. It's more work. It's not part of the original project, which has changed over time. So that would incur additional cost.
The re, the reason I ask is when I look at my district, I I really, I agree that Heinz Palm should be definitely set, set aside as certainly a functioning community. And then I also feel the same way about the post mountain community. But the, and Junction City has, has its own. But then I look at the functionality of the way people live along the river. And the folks from Big Flat, Big Bar and Deloma function highly with their access to the river. And the river runs directly through the middle of their life every day. And then once you hit Cedar Flat, most people from Cedar Flat westward, their community activities generally take place in Willow Creek. So there's a westward, a westward mobility to to all of those communities. And most of their community activities, the volunteer fire departments are connected, if you will. They respond pretty regularly as companion volunteer fire departments. And most of the kids that live in that general area go to Burn Ranch Elementary School or even crossover into Trinity Valley. So when I think about the way the communities like come together and the way they function and kind of the way we, we see ourselves within the river communities, there's definitely a, a different behavior to the way that life is lived to some degree. And so it just makes me curious how we can speak into those those actual behaviors that create the culture of the communities in recognition to the landscape on which they live. And just kind of the, the mind thought process and how we can best include them in, in speaking for themselves within, within an area like that. That's what I'm just curious to know. I just want to, I want to do the best that I can for each community. At the same time, I, I know that there's costs always associated with the more you do, the more you, the more you do.
Yeah. And I think the, the way that the area plan approach does, it does allow the spotlighting of each community within there. It may not be as robust as a standalone community plan. But through the area plan approach, no community is left out of that discussion. So there would be a way to, to highlight that.
One, one more general question, just
Sure.
In terms of, I've just had concern expressed to me that if, if in choosing to two, 10, which we've already said we're going to. Overall, the whole process should take more time, right? In other words, there is a concern that we not detract at all from this, the main goal of the general plan is to dive into land use generally throughout the county. And if in so doing, we focus on 10 small areas, do we somehow detract from or lose pace with? Or focus on this fundamental goal, which is our, our land use difficulties that we've experienced to date? And finding those fundamental kind of separations and identifications, distances and so forth.
I don't, if I'm getting your question correct, I, I don't believe that going to a community, then a community, having community plans that look into land use on a more specific level or refined level is going to detract from looking at land use in the county as a whole. You still have to have a land use element that evaluates everything. The land settlement still has to then be consistent with your zoning. And the zoning code portion of this project is pretty big. It's an evaluation of all of your zoning districts to make sure they're consistent with the general plan. And that we remove districts that are not needed anymore. And that'll come down to the board's, the board's decision. The community plan process will be a, the community plans will be a portion of the general plan, but won't trump the land use element itself.
And so essentially, yes, when we've added five extra community or regional plans, we've added to the total time because it's still going to take that amount of time to really dive into our general land use.
Correct. Yeah.
But we're still in the same timeline that you presented last time. I know that was extended from where we started, but we're still in time with that.
Correct. Yeah. So this, the, the community plan portion was really set up to run in parallel, hopefully with the general plan update. So we will have a community vision workshop with each of the communities that you select. We will also have a countywide vision in process. We'll, we'll discuss land use, specific land use decisions with the community plans. We'll also look at the countywide land use as part of the general plan. So we're definitely not going to overlook that. And the community plans and the general plan itself will come out at the same time as well, because they need to be consistent. They need to be on the same page. So in the spring, we, we have it earmarked right now. There isn't a specific month quite yet. There's a lot of factors that come into that. But in the spring, the general plan would be released, the community plans would be released at the same time. There's another round of workshops that goes out and presents the plan to those communities for all of their feedback. That'll come directly back to the board.
So I do have a question. Although I'm not supervisor of Heinz Palm, I think it's a great thing to put them on because their isolation and all the things that you mentioned. But Post Mountain does have 3,200 population. And there's, I would say equally as isolated as Heinz Palm. And I would like to see if it's possible to include them in the community plan. They're a growing community, second largest in population, only two, District Two, Weaverville. And I just find it hard that they're not included in much of this in a, in a big way. Yeah. And I think that community speaks for itself. And maybe the response to some of the outreach probably wasn't as good as you would like because of cultural reasons. But I, I, I don't think they should be overlooked in the community plan at all.
Sure. And I can, I can address some of that. It was brought up that the population is one of the largest in the, in the county. Population is just one piece of the entire puzzle. When we're, when we're looking at a, a, a neutral way of analyzing communities, not ranking any community necessarily, but just finding out what is there and how that, how all of those points total up. The current services in Post Mountain had it lower on the total. That's the only reason why it was left out of that from a neutral perspective. Uh, option A does include it as part of a larger area plan and it folds in some of the smaller unincorporated communities that surround it. So it is included as part of that. It is up to the board to determine if, if the board feels that Post Mountain necessitates its own community plan. That's at your discretion and that can be part of a modified option B. It can be a hybrid between A and B. Just depends. I, I, I think too, that there are, there are some ways that the next round of workshops, if Post Mountain was included as a community as part of an area plan or standalone, another round of workshops would be there in November. And we can work with not only district supervisor, but other supervisors who have other options or ideas to make outreach to that community greater, so that the participation is higher to be able to have that plan meet the expectations.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right. I have a couple of quick clarifying questions, I guess. And I think just to make it as simple as possible for, for myself and for others. To me, the, the way I understand this, we have a general plan. And we'll have, if, if we adopt a community plan or can't remember what the other term, area plan. That is another layer on top of the general plan. So what we're doing is creating more restrictions in those areas possibly. But we can't reduce the, what's required by the general plan. So if we, if we have a community plan, the general plan says you can do this on this zoning. And then you created a, a community plan, you cannot make it allowable to do something that the general plan doesn't allow.
It has to be consistent with the general plan at a base level. But it doesn't necessarily mean a community plan is more restrictive. I mean, community plan can provide, can provide flexibilities if the general plan is open to flexibilities. The general plan land uses designate your land use designations, but don't get into the actual zoning, which is your regulatory requirements on a parcel, which gets into height of a structure, fencing, so forth, or down to specific uses. But it, it is, it is built upon it. If you remember at the beginning of the process, I showed a graphic that was a pyramid. The base of the pyramid was a general plan. The zoning was next because the zoning implements it, then your subdivisions. And then where most people interact with this process is at the building permit level. Your community plan would fall directly above the general plan. So it would add in the stack. Uh, but I, I wouldn't say it's necessarily even further restrictive. It depends on where the community's expectations are and where they want that community to eventually end up. It's a 20 year plan.
And then the other question I had, you mentioned a possible hybrid. So like for option C, if we wanted to add in, read what the, the central Trinity area plan, along with the Down River Plan. How would you suggest we do that? Personally, I would say you could probably put Ruth and Mad River together as a community. I don't know how your metrics would work there, but that would give you a community plan for Mad River, Ruth, and then an area plan for Central Trinity for Post Mountain. And those areas, if that works.
Well, I think any, and anything is doable. I would say nothing, nothing is necessarily off the table. If we're going beyond the, the designated 10 that were part of the scope, that's something that we would have to work out with county staff and, and forward. If we can work it within the 10. Sure. But that's something that, that would require further discussion beyond this, if it goes beyond the 10.
Right. So that would require contract negotiations.
Great.
Real. I'm, I'm, I'm done.
Okay. All right.
Sure, there'll be more.
All right. We'll leave the questions as they are and we'll move to public comment. And then we may need to, I'm sure we will, need to engage with you in further dialogue once that's over.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right. So we will open public comment on this item. Any in the room?
Thank you. Again, my name is Si Vang. I would like to bring a very important topic to my community in Post Mountain. The most important thing right now for us is solid waste. People are dumping solid waste all over the places. And it's, it's a disaster to the environment. Second point I want to bring up is the road. The private road in Post Mountain is terrible. It's a disaster, environmental destruction, because people driving the dirt is killing all the trees and animal. It's a disaster and nobody maintained for the last 50, 60 years. It's it's very bad. And those are the two most urgent needs that my community is, is asking some house to, to correct those. It is not from the farmer, actually, because they grow, they maintain their little plot of land. So it's not a disaster, but it is actually the private road that running down to the river, killing all the fish. Because of the, the road and the dose that is flying all over places, going down the stream and killing all the fish and animal. So I'm, I, I'm not an environmental engineer, but it's, it's a big concern to our community. And we, we asking the county and board supervisor to address that. So I have, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, since you brought up the roads. If you look at the Attorney Pines subdivision map, the county actually owns those roads and are supposed to maintain them. That was back in nineteen sixty-eight, so you guys are not been doing your jobs.
So I wasn't on this item.
Good morning. My name is Carol Fall. I live in Covington Mill. Um, I'm here just speaking for myself. I'm gonna make that clear. First of all, I just want to say I was a little disappointed in the results of the online survey that there wasn't any fact checking. Not as familiar with other parts of the county, but for the North Lake, I mean, I had people who didn't know how to draw maps, you know, they're just not that swift on, you know, using the computer to draw the boundaries. We noticed that in the results, Carville Inn was listed as being in Trinity Center, and it's way north in Covington Mill. Bowerman Barn and all those features were listed as being in Trinity Center, and they are in Covington Mill. There were just a lot of geographic errors, just because people didn't know how to put stuff on the map. And so I'm a little concerned that then that was translated into, you know, potential community plans and boundaries. I do want to advocate for a separate plan for Trinity Center versus Covington, versus, sorry, versus Coffee Creek. The Trinity Center Community Services District, which is a potential boundary. You know, LAFCO defines our sphere of influence as including Covington Mill and Ridgeville. And by the way, Minersville, which is a point on the map and listed as a potential community, you know, for those of us who live here, we know that Minersville is under the lake. It doesn't exist anymore. The community there is called Ridgeville. And so Ridgeville, Covington Mill, Trinity Center are all part of the CSD. We all share our post office, fire department, the general store, the community center. And so that geographic area, the CSD makes a, a good, good boundary for a community plan. If you lump Coffee Creek in to us with a area plan, you know, okay. But, you know, they have two distinct school districts who've refused to consolidate. There's two distinct fire departments. They're not necessarily the same area, community as you would think. And so I would ask again that you consider Trinity Center with the CSD boundaries, which would incorporate Covington Mill and Ridgeville as, as a separate community plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tommy Lower. Thank you, Chair and the boards. I'm a member of the Post Mountain community, and I just want, in addition to my leader who was talking earlier, I think that we need to include our community into the general plan and the community plan. Because we're such, we have such a, a large population, but because we don't have any development, community development in that area, and that doesn't seem that there's people live there, but there's a lot of people in that area. And I, I, I want to see that, you know, I don't know how, how, how we're gonna do this. We need a post office, we need an ambulance. Besides their, uh, fire hall, we need some other stuff, like maybe K to five school, you know, up there. So that they don't have to go as far as Forest Glen or to Hayford area. And, and it's important that we have those services up there. It maybe, you know, probably years, but I think we need to talk about it. So that maybe five years from now, we have something done. But I, I, as a community member, I, I notice that we need there's so much, so much work ahead of us. And we just need to think about Post Mountain people too. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other public comment in the room, is there any on Zoom?
I have no raised hands.
Okay, that we will close public comment, bring it back to the board.
I do, I guess one more question, but I don't know that you really have any way of answering it. I, I, I know from the census that we had the three thousand plus in the Post Mountain area. And I can't remember where I was in some discussion with somebody about utilities for the area. And they said they thought there were eighty-three people there. But there is a big difference between eighty-three and three thousand. Do we have any sense of what the current population is? As we're making a decision, we're, we're being urged to perhaps represent that community because there's such a big population, and yet maybe it was in twenty twenty and it, and maybe it isn't now. I just don't know.
Well, population is derived off of, off of census data. So if, if what the census said in twenty twenty, which if you're familiar with census, it comes out two, three years later, that is the data that we use. So if the population and, and the census there said it was thirty-three hundred, that's the metric that we would use as, as, as part of that. I believe the, the current population that it has is three thousand thirty-two. There needs to be recognition that that population does fluctuate seasonally as well. But I, I mean, we, we, we use census data or American Community Survey data, which is known as ACS, which is on a five-year revolving door. But that's, that's the metrics that we use of population. And I'd also like to note as well that the, the population that we polled was from the existing conditions and trends workbook that we have already or the, the summary, sorry, the existing conditions and trends report that we put together at the front end of this project. So these numbers won't be any different than what you've seen at the beginning of this process.
Okay. And, and I guess while I have you there, again, based on comments that we've heard, and I, I completely feel for the area that, you know, we're hearing there's just a real lack of services, of roads. Have to determine whether they're county or not county. But a, again, my understanding is whether they have or do not have a community plan does not affect any of those things. It doesn't, being, having a community plan doesn't mean, oh, now you'll get a school, now you get this, now you get that, now you get that. Nor does not having one mean that you wouldn't get that. It, it just provides, the community plan would provide guidance on, like you said, the other things like, what, what can we do with our land, our recreation, what economic development focus do we want to have? But nothing about these infrastructure-type services. Is that fair?
It's, it's, think of it as a guidepost. It's, it's a guidepost for where you want to end up. It doesn't necessarily mean that a, a community plan is put into a specific community within Trinity County that a school's gonna pop up there. I, I, I would, I, I would offer the board to look back at your five existing community plans. Weaverville was last amended in nineteen ninety-seven. I think the oldest one is nineteen eighty-six. If you look at those community plans and the visions and what was put forth, majority of that doesn't exist at, at, at this time. That's not to say that the vision wasn't there and the guideposts were set. But there's a lot of things outside of our control, outside of the board's control that dictate market, dictate economy and where things head and budget. But at least it's a guidepost and a goal to reach towards is the intent.
Okay, thank you.
So with adding High and Palm to the community plan, it gives them a little more, we'll say, input to the board or a little more accessibility.
I think everybody has accessibility to the board and to participate in, in, in the project. It just allows for a more refined vision for that specific area.
Okay.
I, I think it'd be wise to add Post Mountain into that. I mean, it's, it just seems to me, I'm not the supervisor of that district, that there's a big want there, there's a huge population there. You know, the, the vision for that place, and I know you, you get on the community plan, you're not gonna see a school tomorrow. But the vision for the Post Mountain is, is probably the most long-term vision from zero to wherever they're gonna get to. I would think that the majority of the other locations in the community plan already kind of have a functioning, something that you're gonna build off of. I think that, you know, Post Mountain would need an invitation, especially with the cultural differences that they have, to have their questions answered as they move forward from basically, you know, nothing to wherever they're gonna get, you know, in the long run. So I think it's important to, to add them to. It's a big population of our community.
So, is there a question for the team within this?
I, I was, I was beginning to wonder if a motion was involved. I think we're, we're veering into discussion rather than questions, so.
That was my question. Will they have more? If they're, if they are included in the community plan, will they have better access to the board or planning commission to get things done in their community?
If they do have a community plan, the engagement through the general plan and the upcoming community events will be directly located within those communities, and we'll focus on their specific needs and, and opportunities or assets or challenges to cover. The, it, it, it will also mean that there is an extra layer in place that will help, as a guidepost I had mentioned, that'll, that'll help guide future projects or future decisions by planning commission and the board. I, I, I wouldn't say they have, I wouldn't use the word access. It just refines where that area wants, wants to head. The general plan is twenty, twenty-five years.
Sure.
So the community plan would be looking out that far as well.
Okay.
Answer my question.
I have a question.
I don't necessarily know that it's a question, just to help me to refine my own thoughts here. The, the community plans, I, I feel pretty comfortable with that. I'm, I, I'm curious in that you mentioned in that if we do an area plan, each community still has the opportunity and the ability to do kind of their community vision, right? Is that correct?
So in an area plan approach, it would be an area-wide vision. There could be specific policies within that that are focused on specific communities, but it's a, it's a, it's a regional collective effort. So, so if you had a down river, if you went with the down river, let's say.
Right, that's, so that's my district. So I'm looking from, from, from Big, Big Flat all the way to Salier and up into Denny. So it, within that large scope of community, there are some very, very, very different
There are.
uh, communities that exist in like the sub-community of Trinity Village within side of Hawkins Bar. Has a very different feel and desire than say even the communities that within Burt Ranch in the subdivision areas of there. So how, how do I, how do I promote and protect those communities having very, the local ability to say, we, we want to promote this, or we don't want to promote this, or we want this, or we want to move towards this within an area plan, without asking them to be a community plan?
I think within an area plan, you can have an overarching vision that does collectively try to pull together everyone's expectations of, of where a region will go. Think of the visioning process for the county. That's what's happening now. County's huge, covers a lot of different opinions, a lot of different geographic areas. It's basically that same process, just on a smaller regional scale. I think the, the input from, from the other, from the multiple communities that were within an area plan about their expectations of where they want to head, there can be specific policy that is specific to Big Bar or Hawkins Bar or Trinity Village. But it wouldn't be as in-depth for those where each specific area as a standalone community plan would be. But there would still be the ability to have a voice and a way to express where, where all these areas want to head as part of a collective effort. Realizing that in some of these area plans, services are shared amongst areas. So it's not like the services are necessarily gonna vary between community. If they shab the same service provider, if they rely on the same sources, then the policy that moves in that direction is going to be the same.
Okay, thank you.
I got a follow-up on, so in the example that Supervisor Carpenter Harris, if you had two of these very different communities within that area plan, and you're getting a, as much as you can, shared vision, but you see some very distinct differences. Those could be called out in the area plan, as you said, with policies and such that reflect those interests. So if those communities stepped up and voiced a significantly different viewpoint than the whole direction was going, that could still be captured.
Yes, okay.
Okay, that's, thank you, Rick. I appreciate, or Supervisor Wilder. I appreciate that, because I, I do know, like, my mind is over here just firing off information from. I, I do really feel the need to be able to protect certain pods of communities from, from varying things and allow, not me protect them, but allow them to have the option to protect themselves. Thank you.
I, I think a, a good example would be, think of, obviously, we're working on a countywide scale, but if you think of a city. City has, let's take Reading, for example. Very diverse areas in Reading, different incomes, different populations, all reside within their boundaries. In Reading, there are neighborhoods. Each of those neighborhoods have a expectation of where they want to head. Now, they're not gonna have individual neighborhood plans, because they're part of the collective city as a whole. But there will be specific policy, specific goals throughout that do talk to specific expectations for neighborhoods, and that's sprinkled throughout that, throughout that plan, throughout their general plan. That would be the same way through an area plan.
Okay, thank you. That makes me feel better.
For a motion, if you want.
I have one more question, if I could. Can we speak to the survey results that might not have contained the level of accuracy we had been hoping for that was expressed during public comment?
Sure. Is there a specific question that you would like addressed?
Okay, I, I'll just reflect on the notes as I took them, but if we have, say, Carville Inn was listed as being in Trinity Center, Bowerman Barn is in Covington Mill, not Trinity Center. If we have identified things to be in an area that they actually aren't in, and then we're making some decisions going forward based on an incorrect assumption, what, what do we need to go back and clean up? Or, or can you say, actually, it's not gonna be a problem because?
Yeah, so that won't be a problem with the survey responses. So the way that the survey worked is we, we prompted individuals that would visit the site. They were prompted to select the community that they live in, that they want to respond to. And in there, we identified all the communities that are currently addressed in your general plan. If there are different names for those communities, that wasn't related to us. You know, there are certain aspects where we are taking from your general plan. We've gone through this process thus far, so if there is a preferred name change, we can. But the individual results were per community, so they're the, the level of integrity of each response is still, is still there. We weren't lumping, we weren't grouping communities into larger categories as part of that survey. It's, you would pick a community, you'd do a survey for that community only.
And, and if I'm right, because I, I had questions about this from posting and sharing online. And, and my sense was, I could be in Lewiston, giving survey results on Lewiston and say that Main Street Weaverville is a part of what I consider to be Lewiston. It, because it was my, you asking for my view of what my community boundaries are. So there's not a right and wrong. It's my opinion, but what you're gonna come back to us with in October is, okay, but what do you think the boundaries should be? And then we'll vote on that.
So what we did, and it's a really, it's, I'm, we're actually really excited to talk to you about this more, because the visuals on this are gonna be, are gonna be really interesting. I think everyone countywide is gonna be excited to see this process. What we did is each response, we received over two hundred and seventy survey responses countywide. What we did is each survey, one of the main questions was, please draw your boundary. What do you think your boundary is? We, we understand that's a really hard question, because it's political, it's geographical, it's service-based. So that's why we, there is no wrong answer. You're right, we just draw your boundary. What we did then is each two hundred and survey, two hundred and seventy surveys, we essentially stacked on top, top of each other. Imagine a map. We stacked all these survey responses, all these boundaries on top of each other. And what we've, we're finding where there are certain areas where the, the boundary does make sense, where there is some consensus. You're right, we, we do have some responses where it's almost the entire county, and someone says, yeah, that's Weaverville. But it's, we're looking at the collective responses. What, what are we seeing? But it's, we're looking at the collective responses. What what are we seeing as as a whole? And so we we are prepared to show you that and daylight that. We have all the results for that. It's 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 an exciting step, but before we we needed to, before we honed in on boundaries, we really need to determine which boundary we were going to talk about first. And I and I will point out too, this was discussed in in public comment. So the the boundaries are subjective. And and that's where it's that emotional feel about, no, this is, I actually live here, not here. We also need to put the data into that as well. So we have census tract boundaries. We have CSDs, we have districts, we have your, you know, utility districts, we have the supervisory district. So some of that will then get layered on to help, at least help the board inform further and refine on, okay, that boundary stretches out too far, but this this really makes sense. We should align it with a CSD. We should align it with the school district. So all of those more data driven pieces will be there as well, so you can weigh them equally. Can just add that if you, if the, in the memorandum that we prepared for for you and which is available to the public, you start to see a sneak peek of the the boundary layer responses. So those, I'm looking at page eight in the agenda for the Northlake Communities Figure Two. Those are the boundaries that were actually submitted, individual boundaries. So there's lots of information to to go through, but it's a starting point from from your communities, to your community members directly.
Sure, yeah, thank you. Okay, any further questions of our consultant? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. So yes, I would open this up if someone would like to make a motion.
I already did public comment, right?
We did that.
Okay, good. I I move to.
So we already took public comment. I apologize. Um, if, but I'm willing to reopen it. I want this to be fully inclusive. I'm going to do that. I'm going to reopen public comment and invite you to the podium to say what you would like. Yes.
Thank you, both supervisor and board members. My name is Helena Vang. I don't live in Post Mountain. I live in Hayford. But my concern for Post Mountain people, they are my community people, and they are my my Mo people. And a lot of, it is a diverse community up in Post Mountain. And I don't want Post Mountain to be locked out from the general plan. I want them to be included there and please consider them to be in the plan because my concern is every year during the winter, we have to deliver food, gas, propane to the community up there because they can't get out. They can't get out. And the second thing is during the summer, during the winter time, it's so cold that people don't want to stay there. They have to leave. They have to leave the place and they have to leave their animal there. That's why we have overpopulation animal in in Post Mountain during winter time. Because of that. So I want them to be included in the general plan so they can have the business up there. They can have our like immunity up there so they can have a place up there for like permanently instead of just during the spring and summer. So please consider Post Mountain in your general plan. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, public comment is open. Is there any further public comment in the room? Yes, if I've already commented, I correct counsel. So though we have had two sessions of it, I can only allow public comment from the same individual one time. I apologize for that. Okay, seeing no other public comment in the room, are there any other people on Zoom?
I have no raised hands.
All right, with that, we will close public comment.
I move that we adopt option A.
I will second for discussion.
Do you have a reason why you?
So, yeah, I mean, the reasoning for me is that I like the attempt to cover as much of the county as possible in this next layer. And, you know, option B is, like I said, not a wrong policy, but or a wrong approach, but it would give an extra and more detailed layer to certain areas, and then it would leave lots of others just out. Whereas this will give all areas some level of additional detail, which we even had the examples of, and even within an area, if there are very diverse opinions, that can be captured and reflected in some way in policies and such in the area plans. And so that, to me, just seemed like a sort of a better bang for our buck of trying to get the most out of this finer level of planning for the majority of the county instead of just a select few areas. And and then the high and palm part made sense to me. I I made my first visit out there just a few weeks ago, and so I now realize how how set apart it is, and I was impressed with both your comments as well as what I experienced while there of a a very much a sense of community and and so, and and if they're willing to turn out that much to give input, then that means there's probably a lot of good input to reflect in the community plan besides the geographic distinction. So that that was my reasoning. I I would, I would love to have more general plans. I'd love to have Trinity Center plan. I know from work that's been done up there that Trinity Center, Coffee Creek, different. In lots of different ways, I think Post Mountain could be because whether it's three thousand or eighty-three or somewhere in between, it is unique. But I don't see that any of the things that were raised as concerns or comments really are tied to whether or not they have a community plan.
I agree with you there. I think that I'm not sure that some of the areas in my district even would are interested. But I think that option A is definitely the the term catchall kind of fits it. It's a simple method. I just don't, I'm not familiar with some of the, some of the areas enough to know if they fit together. I know that there's it seems there could be a substantial difference between Post Mountain and Forest Glen, not so much between Post Mountain and Peanut, but and Forest Glen and Wildwood. There's, that's a pretty big piece of real estate there that's being lumped together. Mostly Wildwood that throws it kind of. But I think it could work if they get, if they get engagement from the community that, so that everybody's all of those little spread out communities are heard from. And I know that the South County one not as those communities are more tied together, I would say, than Wildwood and Forest Glen. They just don't seem to be connected to me, but they could be.
That sounds like what we were hearing from Heidi.
Well, I'm trying to wrap my mind around around how a community such as Post Mountain would be able to achieve kind of a conceptual, a conceptual idea of a community plan on their, not necessarily on their own, but and then be able to to maybe wrap that into their special district, maybe, or like, how do we do that? How do we, how do we? I don't know that the community plan is the place for the improvements that the community is asking for. I don't know how that will facilitate those improvements when those improvements fall under basic county improvements and and goals within the county as a whole under the general plan for all of our remote communities to some degree. I don't know how having a community plan is going to accelerate those, but I do see how a community vision underneath of an area plan could help that community specifically create goals and objectives for what they want to see happen within their unique community. I don't know why any community couldn't create a community vision and this is just a lot of stuff to wrap your mind around.
You know, I I I tend to draw outside the lines a little bit, and and I don't know that this has ever been done, but it almost seems like what I've heard from different people is if you had interest based, preference based plans that a community over here and a community over here would fall under that interest or perception or or preference plan. So let's say, I I'm in a, I'm in a community and and we're, and I've I've heard this at the placemaking. We don't want any change. We don't want any internet. We just want, you know, just leave us alone. We're here, but this is what we want for our community, exactly what you see right now. And then others that were, of course, completely the opposite. Well, those could be, I could be two p- two groups that are, yeah, we like it just like it is. We really don't want development. We don't want to have any higher buildings. We don't want to have any big road improvements. And that's my interest base, so I fit that profile. Put me in that plan. Have you ever seen that done? Because you could come up within five different interest based, you know, plant, pro, uh, almost personality of the of the area plans, and then he opt in or assign.
A personality approach, I'll call it, is is difficult to do. I I I would say if if there are, if there are communities that are not, you know, that would be lumped into an area plan that are of no interest in change. Not saying that change would occur as part of this plan, but no interest in change, keep us as is, we don't want to be part of this. Then it would call for the removal of the community from an area plan or community plan approach. That community would just fall under the overall general plan and would go along with future infrastructure changes as a countywide. They just wouldn't be included within that, which which I, which is not uncommon. It's not uncommon for that. So, I mean, especially in larger rural counties. Not all communities fall within an area planner or community plan.
And in your initial interaction with people, how many communities did you have that expressed a desire to have their own community, standalone community plan? Can, that might be.
I would say the the existing five, right off the bat, wanted to maintain, wanted to keep, wanted to update. High End Palm was probably the strongest for its own community plan. I would say out of the groupings of communities, the Down River communities, there wasn't, I would say it wasn't brought up by those who attended the meeting to have a, to have standalone. There, we did talk about this regional cooperation of the two ninety-nine corridor that seemed to settle in at that point. But again, that was just the initial touch point for engagement. That's just the beginning. The only other area that I saw where there was an interest in trying to separate was the Northlake Communities. Specifically, the meeting that we had up at Trinity Center, there was a discussion between community groups who attended that there was a distinct difference between Trinity Center, Coffee Creek, and that they they, that they see themselves as distinctly different communities with different services. So there was, there was a, there was a a desire to to split up in the North County, but beyond that, nothing else.
So.
So if we're, if we're willing to add High End Palm, which I think we should, what makes High End Palm's requests I guess, more robust, if you will, than Trinity Center and Post Mountain?
High End Palm is all by theirself. There there are no others, communities to group High End Palm with.
Right. It's uniquely High End Palm.
The closest would be Mad River, and there's a really big mountain between them.
Correct. Okay, all right.
The geography played a, played a big role in 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 that.
Yes, understood.
So if it helps Heidi, which supervisor carbon Harris, which helped me, was I kind of kept forgetting that option A was more of a geographic approach and option B was more of a statistical.
Yeah, so o- option A is, option A is is more of a a geography based assessment. And it mirrors the original, the first round of workshops we had last November, which were explained on community level where the community workshop locations last November were done on a geographic basis and tried to capture as many adjacent communities as possible to try to feed into the feedback collected. Option B is more of a metric based, it's a it's a data approach to it, and that's why you'll see option B. There are smaller communities that will, that were not included in a plan, but they're included in the overall general plan. And in option B, the desire to have specific community plans were tied in based off based off of uses amenities, services that were already there. That's where you will see Ruth, Mad River, Trinity Center, High End Palm. Those all were elevated based on data.
When you had mentioned, again, I'm just referring back to the example of Lake County, and they had communities which highlighted themselves to have their own goals and policies. Could we create an option C that lists particular communities that we would like to see this in, or is that something that would be contract altering?
So the, so the approach that Lake County took is the, the, the entire county is divided into area plans. Within those area plans, there's a vision for the area collectively, not a vision per community within that area. And then there are g- goals and policies that apply to those communities in that area. I, if we, if there was an area plan approach, that wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily change the scope of work. Because you were, you would basically take the areas outside of the existing five, and those would be carved up into area plans. It would, it would be the same. I- if there, if there was a hybrid approach. So I I believe you're, I believe what you're asking is if you, there was an option C that had an area plan approach and allowed the communities to have a a collective vision under that area plan, and then some goals and policies that apply to those communities within that area plan. Does that necessitate a contract amendment? And I would say it doesn't if we stick within that ten boundary.
So I'm going to be super specific if I were to make a motion that we had, I, option A, but within that, we have had a Trinity Center voice, a desire to be very distinctive, in a, in a way, clearly Post Mountain. And I am not exactly how I, sure how I understood supervisor Fraser to say there may be some, I mean, I kind of heard you say some groupings within the South County area. I don't know if, I haven't heard that, you know, rise to a level of a specific request. So for the sake of discussion for the moment, let's just pull out Post Mountain and Trinity Center and say, we've got two communities that are currently lumped into an area. Could we elevate those two within this to say that they would like to see highlights of themselves with with some very specific goals and policies unique unto themselves?
I think they can, but what we'll, but what we'll have to remember is when you do an area plan, you don't want to rank communities within the area plan. You want to give them equal standing.
Oh, for sure.
So I I I I'm assuming what you're saying is that your example of Post Mountain and Trinity Center would get their own standalone community plans, or are you asking for them to be elevated within an area plan?
Yeah, okay, I understand the question. And so, yeah, the answer has to be no from that context.
Yeah, because what what would happen is we would, I mean, you're essentially ranking communities and elevating importance. And at a regional level, everyone's on equal footing.
But even within those area plans, for this example, Post Mountain and Trinity Center, they could have their own set of goals, desires, vision, but still be within that area plan.
Right, it just won't be as robust as a standalone community plan.
Right, right.
Correct.
But they can have their differences within those community, you know, smaller communities within that overall area plan.
Correct, under, under a common collective vision. So it's not standalone vision. So Trinity Center wouldn't have its own vision. Coffee Creek wouldn't have its own vision. It's, they would need to almost like what we're doing right now, countywide, agree on a common vision for Northlake.
Question for you. When we made the adjustment to bring in five new plans.
Yes.
Community and or area, what dollar amount was associated with that?
I would have to go back and look. I don't have that on the top of my head. Originally, I can tell you that there was a a phase of the general plan called alternatives. Alternatives is, basically looks at land use alternative changes that are then analyzed as part of the general plan, which then gets way into future goals and policies. For a county, land use alternatives are not as common because, one, the majority of, the majority of counties is federal land, state owned land, which you don't have jurisdiction over. And actual change in a county, and rural county specifically, is pretty refined and minute. It's not wholesale greenfield development you would see in more urbanized areas. So as part of the discussion with county. So as part of the discussion with county staff at the time was to take the alternatives phase of the project and then flip that into a community plan phase, and that'll serve as looking at land uses countywide and by community. But I don't have the specific cost number associated with it.
Okay. And my understanding from a funding standpoint, um, this is all coming out of the general plan fund. You could use general fund funds to supplement, but you can't use general plan funds for anything other than general plan. Am I accurate?
Yes.
Okay. And, and, and absent anything else to go on, I'm guessing that we're somewhere between $25,000 and $50,000 for every additional community plan. Feel free to correct me. Um, and we kind of just have enough money in the general plan fund to pay for what we're already getting. Is, is all that reasonably accurate?
The latter part of that. The latter part of that statement is accurate. I don't.
Don't know about the other part. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So we have the money to pay for what we're getting, but.
Right.
Yeah.
I have another question that, um, we've contracted to do 10. Is there anything that says that we have to? Should we say, okay, we want to do seven or eight and?
No, there's nothing contractual that says you have to do 10. 10 is, 10 is part of the scope as like a maximum. A maximum. I mean, you could, you could do six. You could just maintain the existing five and that's it. It's up to your discretion.
All right. I'll, I will make a second motion that we, um, move forward with community plans for the existing five. And then community plans for High End Palm, Trinity Center and Post Mountain. And that everyone else would just fall under the general plan.
So adding, uh, adding those three to the existing five and then no area plans, you just let everybody else fall under. And they were again, High End Palm.
High End Palm, Trinity Center, Post Mountain.
Reasoning is?
I think that somewhat there's a I don't think that there's a need as much as some people might have thought for a specific community plan in some of these areas, because these people, these communities, they're not developing at a rate that requires them to have a community plan that states, this is what we want to do. They have a community. I don't think that they need the, the added handholding. They can, they can manage under the general plan. To me, that opens it up to more options as you go forward to just, it's kind of like operating under constitutional law rather than code. You, the baseline and let people do what, what they want above that as time progresses is my reasoning. The reason I would add these three is because they've expressed a desire. We have the, the people to do it. They have the desire to have it. So let them go through the process. The other areas, um, I haven't heard an overwhelming desire to have their own community plan. So I would, I would suggest we leave it for now. Um, the general plan covers the entire county and, and go with that.
Yeah, I'm fine. Do you want to re, uh, read that motion from Dan?
Do you want me to restate my motion?
Please.
Um, my motion is to move forward with the, with eight community plans. It would be the original five that we already have, which I'll probably miss some. Weaverville, Lewiston, Junction City, Douglas City, Hayfork, High End Palm, Trinity Center and Post Mountain would be the three added.
Thank you.
So, uh, the, the one thing that stands out to me, I, I hear what you're saying about the people that have shown up here. I'm looking also at who showed up for these meetings and for our surveys. And the, the numbers that I'm looking at, for instance, Trinity Center, 198 population, 18 in the community mapping survey response. I think they had a one big group meeting, uh, that had 13, the 13 attendees for the Northlake community. Coffee Creek, 152 and had 11 responses. So as a percentage of the population, they were similar. If I look at Post Mountain, the there were eight community mapping survey responses. And I don't see how many people attended the meeting. Oh, five attendees for the whole area. Forest Glen Peanut, Post Mountain, Wildwood. So I, 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 I guess I'm just not putting as much weight as who showed up here. And I'm listening to what I did hear from the people that showed up here, for at least for the Post Mountain standpoint. And none of what I heard reflects on the value of having a community plan. But when I look at who has consistently shown up throughout this process to say, I want to be heard. People from all of these communities have stepped forward and want to be heard.
All right. And then I, another question I would have probably of our consultant is if, if you get into this process, like if we approve a community plan for Post Mountain or some of these other places, then you show up there and start and they go like, this isn't what we wanted. At that point, do we have a, a, an abort button where we just, we end this mission and move on to other things?
You can. I will just say time and efficiency wasted.
Yeah.
That's just, that's something to, that's something to, to keep in mind. And I, I, I do want to point out that even if the community doesn't fall within a community plan, as there was a motion that was made, it doesn't mean that the other communities are ignored as part of the process. Workshops will still move forward through those communities when the general plan is released. They'll still get the opportunity to weigh in on all the elements. They just won't have the community-specific meetings that, that are, that, that are just uniquely to them. But it's not as if the engagement's cut off as, as part of it. The general plan is meant to encompass everyone. That is the intent. And based on the feedback, the boundary discussion, there will be boundaries defined for everybody. Regardless, community plan or not, uh, you, you need to have those boundaries on the books. So that'll still be part of this process. Um, so that again, the 10's not mandated. And I, 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 I think the feedback collected through the process and the feedback today kind of facilitates this discussion.
So.
So I, I've questioned predominantly YouTube, but really the whole board. Um, just because you're the ones that have made the motions, right? And your thinking is what I'm, what I'm after. Um, there was, uh, a, a statement. I'm getting my words mixed up. You had said at one point that you looked at a consideration that perhaps people from Post Mountain didn't engage in this process because there might have been, um, sort of language or engagement barriers to them.
I think Liam said that, but yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Okay. And so if we're, if there was any portion of a, of a feeling that, well, I'm not exactly sure, but it was stated uh, uh, that the particular services that we heard requested in public comment are not necessarily things that would come out of just having, you're not going to get those necessarily just because you now have a community plan. Whereas even if you didn't and you were part of an area plan, you would have equal opportunity, um, to, to move forward with those.
Correct. Not, not, not necessarily. So some of the items that were brought up are a countywide issue, not a locality issue. With the community plan, if there was just, if there was a community plan and the board decided to move forward one for Post Mountain, there would be a specific evaluation of land uses in Post Mountain. If the desire of the community of Post Mountain was to add services or try to bring retail in, but there is no, there is, the land there isn't designated for non-residential or non-ag, then there would be a discussion about how do we make that land use designation step as part of the general plan to get there. It doesn't mean something will be built, but it lays the groundwork for that. And specific to that area.
To me, that's, um, the, the community plan for Post Mountain would not, it wouldn't get them electricity, but it might tell them where the power lines would go. It might tell they, it's not going to give them a solid waste facility, but maybe you plan where to put it. Um, it wouldn't be the, um, there's a lot more involved in actually building an infrastructure.
And the general plan could prioritize infrastructure as part of that too. And that'll be up to the board on prioritization through programs. There could be a program that prioritizes, uh, electrification in areas over others. That'll, th- those are programs that are common in large county general plans, uh, that we can get crafted through the process and then they'll be at the board and planning missions, discretion of what actually moves forward and what's adopted. Because again, it's a guidepost. I look at the programs in a general plan as a checklist. It's a to-do list of the, of, of the board essentially.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay. Thank you for that. That helps. And the other thing I would ask is, um, I guess if anything in, and we knew that we could bring, you know, option C, D or E. Um, is there any concern that the public has been looking at backup data as, well, there's an A and a B? And if we were going to create a hybrid, would we want to hear what the community thinks about, hey, there's a new thought on the table?
I think, um, we were looking at A and B too, and that it's kind of incumbent on us to try to make the a decision we think fits. If, it would be up to you if you want to open public comment again. I would think, but I'm, you would, I don't know. Do you have to talk to council about that with already having two, um, two motions on the table, opening public comment, and we could end up with?
Opening, reopening public comment wasn't going to be my wish. Um, because, uh, that's only 27 people in the few that are in the room and I'm looking at a whole county.
Yeah. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest that we would want to go back, re-agendize it with the option C. I think people should, um, should have realized that we had options A and B. And that means that we're going to make the decision that we think is best, not necessarily of those two. And I think from reading the backup material, it, it was clear that it wasn't this or that. It was the discretion of the board. And I'm open to suggestions if anybody thinks that I should have been my emotion. If you have other communities you think should be included, or if you have some that think should be removed.
Um, Supervisor Carpenter Harris, you seconded the motion with energy. You're obviously quite comfortable.
I am.
Okay.
I feel like the reason I'm comfortable is, um, post port, I guess a portion of Post Mountain, like Dan and I split it to some degree, but the community there really needs a lot of, of support to begin to develop some of the things that the people brought forward and some of the things we just know as a county needs to happen in that community. And I feel like this, this may be the, the very beginnings of the underpinnings that need to be put in place to start making the improvements that we all know need to happen in that, in that area.
Okay. All right. Well, there is room for a second subsequent. If you'd care to make that. All right. Hearing that, Ashley, would you call for the vote on subsequent one?
Move forward with the original five and add High End Palm, Trinity Center and Post Mountain. Motion was by Supervisor Fraser, second by Supervisor Carpenter Harris. Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Hi.
Supervisor Fraser.
Hi.
Supervisor Lou Wiler.
No.
Supervisor Gogan.
Hi.
Chairman Cox.
Hi.
So I, I, I will say that based on the direction today, the eight, the eight area plans, not area plans, eight community plans, apologize, be coming back on October 3rd. As part of that, we will start the boundary discussion on those eight first. And then look at the remaining, uh, unincorporated communities to start to define boundaries so that we can document that as part of the general plan. Then in November, the week of November 6th through the, uh, 10th will be the community plan workshops. That's our round three. As part of those workshops, the eight, uh, communities identified today by the board, there'll be a workshop held in each of those locations. That'll start to break down a community vision that's built off the countywide, uh, vision and, and, and approach. Following that November, we'll go quiet a bit, but that is when we're actually developing the general plan in tandem with the community plans, which will get released in the spring for public review in each of the communities and countywide. So it gives you an idea of what to expect over the next 10 months.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Yeah. And your patience.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good. Need a break. So pretty good.
I was just looking at this one. Can we power through?
I know.
I think we can.
All right. All right. Uh, item 4.1, approve of a budget adjustment for fiscal year 2223 for auditor court remittance, Department 8467, increasing transfers in by $16,362. Approve a budget adjustment for fiscal year 2223 for contributions to other funds, Department 1990, increasing transfers out by $16,362. And approve a budget adjustment for fiscal year 2223 for contingency general fund, Department 9901, decreasing appropriation for contingency by $16,362. Increase in general fund appropriations in the amount of $16,362. Current contingency balance is $125,392.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Chair Cox, fellow board members, county staff and council. My name is Buck Simmons. I, uh, am an accountant for the auditor department here in the county. Here for the contingency funds, uh, pretty much tried to spell out as much as I can on the item report. Uh, I'm here for questions if you have them and I will answer the best of my capacity.
Okay. Thank you for that. Questions of board members? Okay. Uh, with that, we will open to public comment.
I have no raised hands.
Right. We will close public comment, bring it back to the board. Anybody care to make a motion?
Move to approve as presented.
I'll second.
Oh, you're quicker.
Dan can.
It's going to be Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Hi.
Supervisor Lou Wiler.
Hi.
Supervisor Gogan.
Hi.
Supervisor Fraser.
Hi.
Chairman Cox.
Hi.
All right. Much passes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Board of Supervisors, item 4.2, waive the provisions of the governance manual and bring back for the consideration at a future for consideration. At a future meeting, the resolution regarding snow removal for volunteer fire department driveways. This does require a two-thirds vote, which is four-fifths of the board, no fiscal impact. The hotel, I'm not sure who to refer to.
I, I see that my name's on it and I'm happy to, happy to handle it.
Apologize. Yes.
No, there, there was a request made for this item to be reconsidered. Uh, the, the process is, is when an item is heard, it cannot be reheard for a period of year, one-year period unless the board makes a determination by what is a four-fifths vote, uh, that they would like to rehear it, uh, on the same terms as provided. Um, what is attached to your agenda item is the prior resolution that was brought to the board. Um, that, that would ultimately require a four-fifths vote as well, but we, we dealing with that at a later time, should this board decide to bring it back. I'm happy to answer any questions on the process of the waiving the rules and bringing it back and, um, setting it for another date, if that's the board's pleasure.
So I do have, you just, if we vote to bring it back, we would have to pass it by a four-fifths vote also?
Correct. The underlying item, because it is a, uh, because of what it is, requires a four-fifths vote. Correct.
Okay.
All right. Questions? All right. Open the item for public comment. Any in the room? Seeing none, any on Zoom?
I have no raised hands.
All right. We close public comment, bring it back to the board. Entertained a motion?
Move to approve as presented.
I will second.
Motion by Supervisor Lou Wiler, second by Supervisor Fraser.
Supervisor Fraser.
Oh, can we just?
Oh, you want to just?
Yeah.
Uh, at least explain from my perspective, uh, when this.
When this happened before it needed the fourth this vote, I mistakenly recused myself because somebody had raised a concern that there might be a conflict of interest, which, looking back, was a big mistake on my part. Because, one, I was a volunteer on the volunteer fire department, so I would not have received any financial benefit. I was not in a fire district that wanted the snow maintenance support. And there was just no need to recuse, and because I recuse, we, the, the motion failed. And so I felt if we wait a year, then we're basically giving that area of our county that needs this support another season without the support. And hopeful that we can get this back for a decision at our next meeting. I do, there is a letter coming from the Fire Chiefs Association unanimously endorsing this and indicating that at this time, there's only one fire station that definitely wants it, which is Coffee Creek. And Trinity Center was raising their hand to say, and we reserve the right. Because they are also up there where we get, you know, some of the heaviest snows and the crews for those fire departments are limited. So just wanted to provide that frame of reference.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, Ashley, we call for the vote, please.
Supervisor Fraser.
Hi.
Supervisor Lou Wiler.
Hi.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Hi.
Supervisor Gogan.
Bye.
Chairman Cox.
Hi.
All right, item 4.4, human resources. Modify the departmental allocation list for the Department of Transportation to read to transportation planning technician one, transportation planning technician two, transportation planner one, transportation planner two, or transportation planner senior, and one environmental compliance specialist one slash two, effective September 6, 2023, no impact to the general fund. These allocations remain with the Department of Transportation, Acting HR, Director Hamilton.
Thank you, good afternoon, Chair, Supervisors. This item is brought forward by HR on behalf of the Department of Transportation as you read to reduce one allocation and then to increase another within their department. There's no negative impact to staff is the one that is being asked to be reduced is vacant.
Perfect, thank you, questions of board members? All right, with that, we will open public comment, any in the room? Seeing none, is there any on Zoom?
I have no raised hands.
Thank you, close public comment, bring it back to the board.
I do, I guess I just did have one question. When I tried to read through all this, sometimes our verbiage is just, seems like it's meant to numb our minds, but I think what it was saying is we'd be better off with someone that's planner that can help us get grants than the technicians that will implement it.
Correct, and the department head who has the knowledge and expertise in what their department needs stated that they'd be better served by increasing this allocation.
And it's, no, it's not an increase in allocation, it's a swapping, correct?
Swapping, correct.
Right. Okay, thank, thank you.
All right, with that, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve as presented.
No, second.
Motion by Supervisor Lou Wiler, second by Supervisor Gogan. Hearing no further discussion, call for the vote.
Supervisor Gogan.
Hi.
Supervisor Lou Wiler.
Hi.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Hi.
Supervisor Fraser.
Bye.
Chairman Cox.
Hi. Thank you.
Planning and zoning, item 4.5. Introduce and waive the reading of an ordinance amending Trinity County Code Section 17.18.060 pertaining to multifamily R3 zoning height limits, no fiscal impact. Who's looking for Director Presley, and I see he has sent. Thank you for being here, appreciate it.
Good afternoon, Supervisors, my name is Mitchell Wexler, and I am the Assistant Planner with the Planning Department. I'm currently serving as the default planner for the county, as I am the one planner, and I am presenting to you this proposed height limit to amend R3 zoning. This review is part of the 2019 housing element. Under the objectives and programs section, program 1.1 states the following. Let me just, it's a bit. As part of this program, the county will review and amend its development standards if the 25 foot height limit in our free zone and lack of permitted by right uses in the R2 zone are constraints to the development of multifamily housing. The purpose of this item is to review the R3 zone portion of that program. One of the great struggles throughout, I mean, people throughout the county have faced is finding housing. Some have faced, faced weeks without housing prospects. For some, it could be months, for my, in my case, it was. This lack of housing has reached beyond housing security as an issue. It has affected the ability of local businesses to sustain themselves. Due to this shortage of workers, employers have faced difficulties finding enough local workers to support their business. Some with the means have resorted to hiring right out of Reading. That creates the dilemma of having people working in Trinity County, getting paid by Trinity County businesses, and then that money that they're paid is spent outside of the county, creating issues for other businesses as there's no closed circulation of that money. With the volatility of tourism in recent years as well, the customer base of these businesses has also been affected, whether it be the lake levels of Trinity Lake, or the kind of effect things like the pandemic have unfortunately had on our wonderful county. With fewer tourists coming in and workers living outside the county, businesses are losing money that they do need. Amending the R3 height requirement to 45 feet would serve to fill this financial vacuum in both aspects. By allowing for more apartment units, housing availability would allow for people to live in the county. This would mean that these businesses have a larger permanent customer base on the, for the off season and a larger pool of potential employees to choose from. This would help maintain the county economy and ensure that a bad season or two for tourism will not have major consequences on those businesses that really depend on those tourists at the moment. And it would also help with all of the families that have built the local economy. I should mention that, of course, they've put a lot of hard work in. And for that, for those reasons, so far, I would recommend, I mean, it is recommended by the Planning Department that the reading of the ordinance be amended to allow for a 45 foot height limit for housing.
All right, thank you, questions of board members?
At this time, maybe this question isn't for you, but you might be able to answer it, at this time, is our fire department capable of extinguishing or venting fires at the 45 foot level?
They are not, it is worth noting that the other residential zones have 40 foot height limits as well, and those unfortunately cannot be reached either.
I think it's Weaverville only has the ability to reach. Correct?
That is correct.
So with all the things you said about tourism and all that, we're putting the public at harm if we build over 45 inches, 45 feet outside of Weaverville somewhat?
It would depend on the situation. In many cases, sprinklers are mandated for new buildings to be constructed, which would lower the, the risk factor of fires within an apartment complex. If we're talking about medical emergencies, then admittedly, that could be a potential issue. Regarding venting, that would probably be what I could see as the largest concern.
It wouldn't readily come to my mind that a medical issue with added height ability to a building would put the public in harm's way, are you thinking of something I'm not thinking of? They have to go up one more flight of stairs?
I was thinking in the case that some, that a ladder could not reach the floor height. But I would like to correct myself, given that the floor height is lower than 45 feet. I may have misspoken in that regard.
No, that's, it's perfectly fine, and it is a consideration, I just was checking to see if there's something I wasn't thinking of, so thank you for that.
Certainly.
All right. Okay, you have another question?
I have one more question, so, and maybe you don't know this, maybe Carol might know this, what does the other volunteer fire departments, what is the range of their ladder currently, you know?
From when I last spoke with them, the range would be 35 feet in height. And that, and the main concern regarding building taller buildings, I would like to clarify that in the many instances that I have done research with, it is not guaranteed that a higher height limit would get, would mean by necessity, higher buildings. Many of the cases I found that the height of the buildings only ever stuck at 25 feet in places such as Mendocino County. In many other counties, there's no record at all of any new building reaching that height, so it's not guaranteed, I would presume that it would be most likely to occur in places with high densities of R3 zoning, such as Weaverville, potentially Lewiston. Because the Hayfork R3 lot that exists is currently blocked at multiple ends by different layers that will, I mean, by different flood plains that would mean review.
In planning department review of a submitted application, would there be health and safety considerations based on where the project was being proposed to be located as far as approval or potential denial of the project?
Health and safety considerations, could you please elaborate, I'm not sure I'm following.
A fire truck, so somebody puts in an application to put a building in an area where we, we know we don't have a fire truck that can reach the, the building height being proposed. Would the planning department vet that, or would it ministerially go through?
It would ministerially go through.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
So right now, you're saying the only lot in Hayfork to build something is not available to build on actually because of where it sits?
It would, it would likely be very financially non-viable. So it would limit the location of any potential projects to Lewiston and Weaverville.
Thank you, let's use that.
Okay, thank you, we will open to public comment.
Hi, my name is Carol Fall Covington Mill, and I'm speaking for me personally, although as a assistant chief of a volunteer fire department, and Trinity Center doesn't have any R3 zoning, so this does not affect my department. Couple points, one, this ordinance wasn't presented to the Fire Chiefs Association for their comments. Personally, I have a concern. R1 and R2 zoning can have 45 feet, but that's much less dense zoning. We're talking about R3, which is multifamily, you know, apartment complexes, so there, there's an apple and orange kind of thing there. We do have better building codes, which are wonderful with the sprinklers and all that, but all that does to me as a firefighter is give me more time to rescue people who might be trapped. I still have to get to them. Weaverville is the only department that has the ladder truck. Most of us just have three fly ladders, which are 30 feet essentially. So I don't know how I would get to someone in a multifamily apartment if the apartment next to them caught on fire and they were saying, come rescue me, I don't know how I would get to them. And so, and I just want to point out that currently, if someone wants to put in higher zoning, a higher building, they can do that. They just have to go through a consumptive, a conditional use permit application process, which lets the fire departments know this is being proposed, and oh, by the way, I don't have the equipment to deal with that. If you adopt the ordinance as is without some language that says somehow other the fire department has to have the ability to, to take care of the situation, the fire department may never even know that someone's applied for a building department, and even if they have concerns with the ministerial approval, those concerns may not register. Thank you.
Thank you.
Being in the construction all of my life, 45 feet is a four story building. And is this 45 feet to the plate line, and then the roof is above that, or is this just rich? I mean, because normally the 35 foot level we had in Trinity County was to the plate line. You could have a 12 by 12 pitch roof on top of that, so, you know, you're going to be really high up there. But 45 feet, you could do a four, four story building.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment in the room, is there any on Zoom?
I have no raised hands.
All right, thank you, with that, we will close public comment, bring it back to the board.
Counsel, if you can help me with this, I'm, I'd like to move that we adopt this with language that indicates basically only in areas in which the local fire department has the equipment to effectively protect it.
So my question would be, if the local fire department loses that equipment or is unavailable, would we have language in there that would stop this? It's hard to tie it to third parties purchasing of equipment. But I understand what you're trying to do, so I'm trying to noodle some ideas.
Yeah, so your, your, your concern is, we prove it as what I just said, somebody gets approved because we do have the equipment, then they lose the equipment, now do they have to stop that kind of a thing?
Correct, yes. If we can tie it to.
Building, and then you lose your ladder truck, and are you going to take the top story off?
Yeah, well, I, I guess then I'll make a motion, then we can think about another one, I, I make a motion to deny this motion, because I, I had checked with the Lewiston Fire, Fire Department. They, the Fire Chief team is, oh, okay, okay, yeah, second, yeah, sorry.
A second for discussion.
Okay, continue.
Okay, I was just going to say that I, I have checked with Lewiston Fire Department, they, they oppose this because they are in a position like we heard from another fire chief, that they, they just would not be in a position to protect it. I checked with the Weaverville Fire Chief, who indicated that it would be around one and a half million dollars for one of these fire departments to get the equipment that could support it. And, and, and I think as Carol said, too, from all the training and, and other things that I've been exposed to, sprinklers basically give you between 10 and 30 seconds longer to survive in your house. It's not going to protect the building from burning down, it's not going to significantly delay the amount of time. And so, yes, it's great that we have these new protections in place, but we, we basically would be setting ourselves up for buildings that we can't protect, and so we're allowing for that to happen on our watch, which I think is the wrong thing to do.
How did you hear about the 10 to 30 seconds, that seems extremely short for me to put in sprinklers? For 30 freaking seconds, Jesus, that's kind of expensive.
Yeah, it was on.
I mean, if it's true, that just doesn't seem very a good plan, I mean, 23 seconds because I put sprinklers in? I'll digress, I also talked to both my volunteer fire department chiefs, and they are against this. For same reasons that Rick's are.
This is a tough one, because I, I agree 100% with our fire departments need and ability to, to rescue people in these scenarios. But we're also facing a situation where we don't have places for people to live. And that is such a limiting factor constantly, I mean, we hear from it from the four service, they can hire folks, but they can't get here, we, we hear from it, we hear it with people who want to put on conferences here, but we have nowhere for people to stay, we we're constantly up against this need for more housing. So how do we, how do we approach the need for more housing and the development of our fire departments so that they can go forward without stopping the ability to create more housing? You know, so how, how, my curiosity is, how do we respect the needs for our emergency services at the same time continue to encourage our planning department to look for ways to, to build more housing? I, I don't, I don't just want to like slap this down because our fire departments can't do it, but I understand the need for the fire departments to do it, so I would say, how do we move forward then? Yeah. What kind of direction can we give our planning staff to? What kind of direction can we give our planning staff to say, okay, this didn't work at this moment in time? But we need to figure out how to make something like this work, one thing we don't have, we can't expand. So we can't build more housing always on a single story scenario, although I'm not. Hoping that we have a bunch of high story buildings in our in our small communities, but. We are circumferenced by land we can't touch in every way that we go, so we are gonna have to go up a little bit. So how do we, how do we look at that and? And not just slap this down and say, no, we can't do it right now when we. So there's, there's a way and a an opportunity for them to come to the planning department and look for. But how, but how do you say yes to that, knowing that the fire department can't? Can't do it whether it's one person's building or whether it's another person's building.
Well, I wonder if you, go ahead.
Oh, I was just actually clearing my throat, go ahead.
I wonder at least for those areas served by Weaverville where they do have a ladder truck tall enough. If you consider. In other words, if the, I'm going back to the language that counsel and supervisor were trying to think about and and understood, we can't base it on. Do you have this, you know, equipment at this time, but we do have in Weaverville this equipment at this time. And I suppose you could get really wild and say, well, what if it breaks or what if, you know, what if whatever? But it is here and the intent is for them to have one. If if it at least could go forward at this time for those areas that Weaverville can can touch and protect.
Yeah, my understanding is there's no. No parcels zone to fit what we're talking about. There's, there's three in Lewiston, one in Hayfork, and there's none anywhere else. That's my understanding. Oh, there are some in Weaverville, okay, I thought. Okay, so.
Do you have more to say regarding that from the planning department? Is that?
That's fine, yes.
Apologies for the lack of clarification, there are multiple R three parcels in Weaverville. In fact, I would say the majority are located in Weaverville. Apologies for leaving that out, I don't mean to seem like I'm not finding everything.
No, you're great, thank you.
Well, and I completely agree with you, but we we need to address the housing. I think there are a number of things we do, and I think we should probably focus some energy on that, but you know, we've talked before about. Some counties have pre-approved ADU plans, they have streamlined processes for ADUs, like we've been kind of dealing with our. Being forced to consider streamlining of commercial vehicle chargers. There are counties that are looking at putting limitations on the. Or some kind of implications for converting residences into vacation rentals. And there's a two double edged sword because we need it for people, places to stay to come visit, which is supports our tourism. But everyone that goes up for vacation rental means we don't have a place for somebody who actually lives and works here. I think there are a number of things that we could look at, and I've heard a lot of counties trying to deal with it different ways, but I just. I think that. Adding what I think would be our first four story buildings. Into communities that can't support them, protect them, does not seem like the right way.
Could we make this a motion to have this? Only in the Weaverville Fire District or District Two and not in the other four districts?
I believe so, yes, you can do that, I would defer to planning to make sure that they're comfortable with that as well from a. From a procedural standpoint.
You know, and I say that because I don't think the other districts are really gonna see that much expansion in height. I think if it's gonna happen here, it would be hotels somewhere in the Weaverville area.
I don't know if a hotel would fall under multifamily.
Or not a hotel, but if there's any building up of the community, I imagine it would be somewhere in District Two would be my my guess. So I could make a motion. Did you want to add anything or anything to it?
From my understanding of the code, a district two designation could be done. I do not see any broader implications to that that could be proper, that could lead to any issues from the procedural standpoint.
Thank you very much, so I would make a motion.
I would caution you for using District Two language and.
Well, that's what I was gonna.
Weaverville Fire District if you would like to, but. District boundaries are subject to change also, fire districts and supervisory districts.
Sure district.
Well, I'm sitting here with a little bit of discomfort because I wish that the fire chiefs would be consulted on this type of thing before it's brought to the board so that we could have their insight. I think we all have the same goal of creating more housing. So I don't really want to make that motion at this time because I feel like I need more input.
I I have to, I don't know, we can't get caught in the trap either of. I think to consult the Fire Chiefs Association or something for everything we're going to do, there is a time when we have to do. What's right. Countywide, and then if that means that the fire departments have to catch up, then that might happen. I have no problem consulting them and saying, we've and we've had supervisors that did so, it's like, okay. We don't have a truck that can do this, that we can take into account, but. I think we we don't want to get too far into the. Depending on third parties, and counsel kind of brought that up earlier too, where it's like, we can't. We can't be dependent on a third party to. Make our decisions for us and right now as a county, we're dependent on volunteer fire departments for all fire protection, so we're not guaranteed. That we're going to have any fire departments next year. There's, that's the. The problem with all volunteers, it's sometimes they aren't, so I would, I would be. Okay, I think with carving out kind of Weaverville, I would. My thing was with using District Two, that doesn't. That could be subject to changing, I can't remember exactly where the new boundaries are and all that, so I would use Weaverville Fire Fire District boundaries.
Are there, are there pending applications that require passage of this today?
There are people interested in pursuing if it is, but as of right now, there are no current pending applications.
Okay, follow, thank you.
The other discussion we could have is if. If forty five or is the correct number. We, if we put the number at forty feet. It still doesn't. Depending on your engineering, you could probably cram four stories into forty feet. If we drop it below forty, you're talking three story buildings, so. If we want to put a different number on that. We could do that also. I don't know that. As Mitchell brought up in his presentation, just because we say that there's a forty five foot height limit. Doesn't mean that people are going to build forty five foot tall buildings, there's still. The cost to build involved also, so. And. The cost increases the higher you get off the ground.
I'm gonna throw a motion on the table for consideration, and that is to carve out. The Weaverville Fire District. As allowable, this as being allowable within the Weaverville Fire District with the caveat that a CUP process be required. So that the fire district would know that application is there and potentially being processed.
Well, I think if we, if you're gonna require a CUP, then we don't really need to do this because it would already be. They could already do it if they go through the whole CBUP process, but that's a major undertaking.
Yeah, so basically, as we heard, they already can use CUP process to do this.
Yes, because it would be outside, what we would be doing is amending the zoning regulations so that they wouldn't have to go through the CUP process.
Okay, no, I don't want to make a motion.
I'm gonna make a motion.
There is a motion on the table, supervisor has a motion to deny, and there's room for a subsequent and a second subsequent.
A subsequent motion. To allow. This in the Weaverville Fire District and to exclude it from the other four districts in Trinity County. And also make our. Height limit the same as the multi county examination of forty four point one six feet, just to be not an outlier. Forty four point one six is the average. Let's stick with that.
That's a terrible number.
It's what it is, eight inches or so.
What is the frame of reference and why is it important?
So based on a multi county examination, average height of found in multifamily residential zoning districts is forty four point one six.
Well, I would. I, I don't know that we. Want to get that into it, I would say.
Have a second first before we have. No, you're good, thank you.
All right, here, I'll take that out and move to forty five feet.
All right, I will second that.
A motion to deny and a motion to approve within the Weaverville Fire District only.
Yes. And. I don't know, I'm maybe a question for for planning staff. Is is the forty five foot number? Did you guys come up with that simply because it's the average?
The initial number was forty feet even, it was the, it was under the suggestion of supervisor sharp, or not supervisor commissioner sharp. That it be brought to forty five feet for construction. Or for for basically the ability of developers to meet three stories, it was our understanding that it would. Largely be three stories if it were at forty five feet, it would be a very developer friendly number for that reason.
And I, I. I think that we could, you can get three stories under forty five feet personally. I haven't built any multi story buildings that tall, but. Engineering would come into play if you didn't have a pitch groove or whatever, I know Weaverville has some flat roof buildings, so. That's another consideration we could, we could. Take is if we want to. Limit that height. It looked like most of our fire departments are capable of reaching heights of thirty five feet. If we. Make that adjustment. It would limit the buildings to three stories. Maybe two, but. I think that that's another avenue we could take.
I have a point, I have a question that needs to be answered, are you talking to plate line or to ridge? Because there's a big difference between plate line and ridge.
I think we would have to ask our planning staff that, how how are you measuring overall height?
Overall height for the buildings would be measured from the base, I am not familiar with the plate or ridge terminology that has just been used.
That would be the top of the walls or the top of the roof?
Oh, okay, the top, it would be the top of the roof. Thank you for that clarification, by the way.
Thank you.
Clear as mud sometimes. Okay. Well, I'm good with the second motion because in effect it does what I was getting at with. Where there's equipment and we're saying, well, Weaverville has it, so let's do it there. So in effect, it's getting the same place. And it just means that if Lewiston or Hayfork later got the equipment, then we'd have to amend the motion.
Well, we would have to, we would have to amend the zoning.
The zoning.
Which. Might all get changed anyway here soonly when we update the zoning ordinance.
I need a minute.
Okay.
So that you can know where my thinking is, I did try to reach out to District Two Fire Chief and he's been sick and he's trying to answer me. And. It's important to me to know what he thinks, so. Just need a minute, I could take a five minute recess if you're more comfortable. Best or best to just pause. Your truth, okay.
I don't mind doing, I'm lost.
Are we waiting on the text message, so we're doing?
We're taking a, did you say a five minute recess?
I didn't, I didn't know.
I was pausing, it looks like I can take a while, I'll just take a five minute recess.
All right.
Back at one o'clock. Well, yes. You can go get it right now if you want to. Okay, it's, uh, sorry, a couple of minutes after one, we're back in session and we have two motions on the table. We have a motion by Supervisor Lutwiler to deny and seconded by Supervisor Fraser. We have a second motion by Supervisor Gogan. And it's a little intricate. Could you reread Supervisor Gogan's motion, please?
To allow in the Weaverville Fire District only, um, and limit the height to forty-five foot. Is what it was, because he amended it from the other case.
Grief. So I ask you one more question, Mitchell. Of the, um, applications that you, and perhaps you don't have the information of this. You said you have some folks out there that are inquiring and that would like to move forward. And I would like to know if you do know, are they asking for a full forty-five feet?
They seem more interested in the prospect of three stories as they have not asked about the full forty-five feet specifically.
Okay. And, and we don't know how short three stories can be.
I would need to consult with a, um, developer in order to figure that out.
Right.
Ten foot ceilings and a ten foot ceilings and an eight foot roof, you're almost at forty feet anyway.
Have to do ten foot ceilings though, right? Do eight.
Eight, seven, six in some buildings.
Courthouse is about seven feet.
Um, so I'm just really uncomfortable with holding back progress and also creating something that at some point in time, somebody is there in need and we don't have a way to help them, and that's just really uncomfortable.
Do you want to make a motion to reconsider this next meeting?
What are we, what part are you uncomfortable about? Because we have it, the buildings going in where they are reachable. At this time.
They're reachable today, but the problem then becomes that ladder trucks are, um, so just, I'm going to quote the Weaverville Fire Chief. Um, he doesn't have his computer, he can't access, but I believe supervisor Lutwiler, while it kind of already encapsulated this, they don't make a ground ladder anymore that will go above thirty-five feet that he knows of. Plus even the thirty-five foot ladder is dangerous to use if you're not trained on it. If departments want to go after grants to buy new ladder trucks, they would need over a million dollars for just one. There are used ladder trucks out there, but grants don't cover used equipment, and most of our Trinity County departments can't afford to buy them outright. And so I'm just concerned about the day that maybe we don't have that truck. I'm just concerned about the safety issue. And so to me, it's more comfortable to do something right now. I want to see us to get to three stories. I wanted allow this and, and I want safety in the motion.
At this time, we do have a truck that can go to forty-five feet.
So just to make, provide an option is this, this is the first reading, so we will come back. Um, so if between now and then there's, uh, further discussion or changes that need to be made, we can re-hear the first hearing next time as well. So this is not the adoption, so that, that helps get more time.
That's helpful. Um, okay, with that, uh, anybody here would make a second subsequent? That's an option. Oh, go ahead.
Can I please hear the motions? All, there's three, right?
Only two.
Supervisor Lutwiler motion to deny. And that was seconded by Supervisor Fraser. And Supervisor Gogan approved with amending to only in the Weaverville Fire District. And Supervisor Fraser also seconded that one.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, uh, actually, we'll go ahead and call for the vote.
We'll call on the vote to allow in the Weaverville Fire District only first Supervisor Fraser. Supervisor Gogan.
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris. Supervisor Lutwiler.
Aye.
Chairman Cox.
Aye. All right, thank you. That concludes closed session. I do need to circle back. It does conclude open session. I do need to circle back because I intended to report out, um, there, there is no report out because there was no closed session, but, um, I wished that I had said that. There was no closed session on the August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three agenda, so that's why there was no report out on that. All right, moving into closed session, item five point one. Government Code Section five four nine five four point five C Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation. Number of cases, one, Carlson et al versus County of Trinity et al, Trinity County Superior Court Case Number two zero C V one three six. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none in the room? Is there any on Zoom?
I have no raised hands.
All right, that we will close open session.